Coming back to order, and go ahead, and we left off as we were moving into current practices and programs. Mr. Fisher, the floor is yours.
All right, long time no see. I know I mentioned that Stephanie Gregg would be doing the next few slides, but in preparation for Comp Plan hearing tomorrow, we did a little shuffling, so I'm done talking for a little while, and I'm going to turn over to Brian for the next couple of sections.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon. The exciting world of density increases and development potential. All right. Buckle up. This is going to be exciting. All right, there are three main methods for increasing density in Palm Beach County above the current future land use designation. And as you see on the screen, there are three main methods. One is the amendment, or you used the, let me back up. You start off by using through zoning process, the future land use designation. If you can work within what that allows, that's what you go through. You just go through a zoning process. If it is not what a development is looking for, or, you know, for purposes of redevelopment, it's simply not enough to make it, they can always come in and ask for a future land use atlas amendment. That is one method. The other two methods that we have on the screen, the Transfer of Development Rights Program, or the TDR program, as we all call it since we speak fluid acronym soup here, it's the required method for density increases. This is something we talked about last Thursday. I actually made a point of that. That was something of a feed, if you will, for this, because we knew this issue was coming up, and it's very much part and parcel of what's going on. This is the required method to increase density. The TDR program, only for the urban suburban tier, depending upon where you are, your geography gets you anywhere between two and potentially up to five units per acre. That is done again through the zoning process. The other program, it's a different program. It's our workforce housing program. It's also applied at the time of zoning. It is a different means to increase your density. It is part of the request. You see these routinely. They can request up to 50% or also 100%. Maria will get into all of those details, but those are also processed at zoning. Those are the preferred, the latter two are the preferred, and I'll show you how this works on this slide. For the urban suburban tier, you can get a workforce housing density bonus up to 100% over the future land use designation, and/or use the Transfer of Development Right Program for up to five units per acre. So you get all that. That's how you calculate your density now without coming into the land use process. Again, only for the urban suburban tier. Those are where these programs are applied. There are also special programs in play for Westgate. You heard Elise earlier tell you about that. We also have the urban redevelopment area, which Westgate is a part of, but there are priority redevelopment areas within that. You occasionally do see projects there as well. And so this is how they're done, but I'm going to go into the future land use amendment process, because this is surprisingly the easiest one to talk about. So if you can start here, we'll build from there. All right, this is the amendment process. When you see planning in front of you, they are going through this process. That is always what, when you see a site specific, they are proposed amendments to the future land use atlas differing or changing whatever they were assigned in 1989, or from that point forward, if they had a prior amendment. Statute allow for the amendments and specific requirements regarding the number of hearings, public notification requirements, there are deadlines for adoption, and submitting these to the State Department of Economic Opportunity, and they're all outlined in Chapter 163 of the statutes. The Division receives a significant number of future land use atlas amendments each round, many of these requesting higher densities. The high number of amendments, we feel, demonstrate the growth pressure that this county is feeling. This has been, you know, on the rise of late. We've certainly seen a lot over the years, but it's at a new level, if you will. There are two types of applications the Board considers, large and small scale amendments. You saw both of those last Thursday, just for reference. Small scale amendments work four times a year. They are in the urban suburban tier only, and they are for parcels under 10 acres. They require one hearing at the local planning agency and one at the county commission for an adoption. The intake for large scale amendments occurs twice a year, and again, it can be in the urban suburban tier, but 10 units or greater is the threshold, or any sites located out of the urban service area, which also includes the ex-urban rural ag reserve and the Glades tiers. Amendments require concurrent text amendments, or also consider a large scale amendment. So that's changes to the actual policies of the comprehensive plan, so that's how that works. And then there is a far more robust review process. At this point, when you have a transmitted, the large scale amendment, you all hear at once. It goes off to all the state agencies for review, and then you will come back and have the adoption hearing. So this is the graph effectively how this looks, the small scale versus the large scale. Wanted to point out that the urban suburban tier, the 10 acres, there is a statutory change that says it's different. You can go up to 50 acres. We have not done that, because we're finding that the parcels are actually getting smaller. And in many cases, I think, planning and zoning feel that there is a benefit to having two hearings, if at all possible. So anything under 50 acres, which is virtually anything in the urban suburban tier, you are going to only get one bite of the apple, one chance to hear it, and the transmittal hearing gives you all a chance to weigh in on the major policy issues that then allows a zoning application to come back later. Based on that, you then hear zoning and planning together. And so that's one reason we have not elected or brought forth anything reflecting that statutory change, but I wanted to point that out, because there is sometimes a belief that now the small scale threshold is automatically 50 acres, so I wanted to point that out. Large scale, as you can see, two times per year, urban suburban tier, the 10 acres, the more extensive review. All right, TDR program. The Transferable Development Rights Program was established in 1980 for the purposes of protecting environmental and agricultural land. This is where the development right that it would have had is put into a bank and then later transferred into the urban suburban tier. That is fundamentally how the program works. The development rights, 99% of the time, come from county-owned land, our conservation lands, our parks, so forth. That is the source. So they are put into a bank that is later transferred to the receiving or the urban suburban tier. The revenue generated by the sale of TDRs goes to support our environmentally sensitive lands and their maintenance and upkeep. To date, 2,785 have been sold for a value of 17.9 million, and there are approximately 6,500 TDRs still available. We also have policy directions, as if that ever gets too low, we can go back and look at other conservation amendments on county-owned land and actually replenish the bank.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you. I thought I'd cut in right here, so we could review this. So the TDR sold from the bank fund is, pays for maintenance of our, of our land that is environmentally sensitive, such as Loxahatchie area, the, I'm sorry, the, what am I talking?
Palmer.
Any of our, any of our, any of our, a sensitive, environmental sensitive lands.
Correct, Vice Mayor. It offsets the cost. It does not pay it in its entirety by any means, but it offsets the cost of the over 30,000 acres that we have in conservation that Environmental Resource Management maintains.
Do we have, do we know how much of that is in a fund that we can use to protect our, our environmentally sensitive lands? That, I mean, I'm not asking you right now for that, but that could be readily assessable to find out how much money we have in that fund right now.
The money actually flows to IRM when a check comes in, so that the money for the TDR is required to be paid when they come forward at their final development order. When that check comes in, it goes into the fund and begins to be utilized soon thereafter. So there's no money sitting around. At any given moment, there might be some monies sitting around, but it doesn't aggregate. That goes, that goes to work rather soon.
We talk about our conservation parcels and our environmentally sensitive lands. At some point, I wonder if we could have an idea of where the funding comes for these environmentally sensitive lands, that is state, federal, county, TDRs. I just find, I just find it interesting that, that, that that much money is going into these lands, because I don't see it. And so much of it should be just left alone, but I need, this is a workshop, so I need to be educated in this area. So if you could, Patrick, at some point tomorrow, day after tomorrow, provide all the commissioners with that information, because I think that it's important that we know how much money the state and the feds, as well as the county, is providing for these conservation lands. We're going to have a workshop the end of March. I want to know what we're, how much money we're putting into our conservation lands, and whether it's doing a good job or not. Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
And on the note of this being a workshop and just learning, builders can choose to purchase a TDR to increase density. I'm following. What if there is specific land in a specific place? If we didn't want to allow those TDRs or an increase in density of a certain area, then the Board would vote no? And then what part of the process is that?
Because they are handled through a Class A conditional use at the Board, they are a separate use approval that you see as part of the request. They have to meet the standards that are in the code for that, so I guess the Board can make a finding that they do not meet those standards, and then deny the application for one of the seven or eight reasons enumerated in the code requirements.
Mayor, do you mind?
No, go please.
And though, those criterias, what, are they in this packet?
No, they're, they're the criteria, like last week at the zoning hearing, there was much made about the criteria that are out there, and whether it consists of a plan compatible, design minimizes adverse effect, environmental issues, that, those seven findings or eight findings, depending upon the request, those are the criteria that they look, that would be the basis for an approval or denial.
Thank you.
All right. No more lights.
All right. Back into the exciting world of the TDR program. The available units per acre are assigned by the plan. That's done in policy. That's that two to five range. Since 1998, and this is key, the TDR program has been the required method to increase density. You have to satisfy that first by policy before you can access any of the other methods other than the workforce housing program. And then since 2006, the county created the workforce housing program. At that point in time, it required a percentage of units in new development to be workforce, and then also changed the work, or the TDR program to require that some of the TDRs also had to be provided as part of the workforce housing program. So, and until last year, a recent code change, TDRs and their associated obligation were required to be addressed on-site. Last year, the code was revised to allow the workforce housing units resulting from TDRs to now be treated as any other. So there were, there were some equalization, if you will, and this will become a little bit more clear later as we get into sort of how the two programs go together. So the units could then, you could get a density increase, but the workforce housing obligation could then go off-site rather than being on-site. Just for reference, these are the TDR prices. We used to have one, this is, but this is the most current rate. They range anywhere from $74 to $54,000. The price is reset annually based on the median sales price for a house in Palm Beach County. And the variation is based on the unit type, the location, there's a discount for revitalization areas or other incentives, and then also based on unit type, whether it's single family or multifamily, and whether the unit will be used for an affordable workforce unit or a market rate unit. So there's a lot of variability in that programming. Happy to come back and look at it and answer any questions, but we're going to move on. The amendments, as I said, are the preferred method, are preferred by the development community to use these over the TDR program. The TDRs was intended to be an alternative to the land use amendment. If you go back in time, it used to be much more difficult to get a land use amendment approved because of the ability for challenges and whatnot. So the TDR method was sort of a shortcut around that. It was an allowable density increase, and so we've kept that mechanic in place, even though the, the world under the land use amendments has changed. So just want to make you aware of that. Higher densities have been requested, and a number of issues have emerged as a result. The amendments are preferred because there is a lower workforce housing program exaction, and we will talk more about that as we continue. The layering of density bonus programs on top of the amendment process means the density is not transparent, so you will hear that we don't see how one unit becomes two units, becomes four units, and how is that? So one of the issues we're dealing with is numeric density, and what does it actually mean, because many times you're approving things over the future land use designation. The code requirements that we have at present can make for a very convoluted calculation, and can differ greatly from project to project, based on acreage, the land use designation, the other factors, and geography and whatnot. And they can differ in the guidance provided, or due to the guidance provided by the BCC for projects involving amendments with a 10, 20, or 25% requirement, and also based on code requirements and unit type. And finally, with TDRs as the required method, is a result, had the result that small projects have a very high proportion of their density required to come from TDRs. And to that, you may recall last week, we had two very different amendments, both small scale and large scale. This is what came into the hearing, if you will. It's not necessarily what you adopted at the end. In the case of Villages Windsor, it was, but in the request for Colony Estates LR2, it was an amendment from one to two, total of 39 units, you ultimately adopted 38. There were, the staff recommendation because of the policy was 19 TDRs, and so 49% of the total units in the entire project were going to come from the TDR program. Only 10 of the units came from the land use amendment. However, the workforce housing requirement from that, if they'd taken all of the TDRs, would have been 21% of the units. Whereas Villages of Windsor, a much more dense project, went from two to eight, total number of 184 units because of the TDR program, they only could do 36, which was 19% of the overall project and its density, and, but because it came through the amendment process, got a 25% workforce obligation. So this is a real-world example. It's fresh, it's current. You all certainly heard that and worked through that last week, and so just wanted to make the, make you aware. But this, this higher obligation associated with TDRs, that is one of the reasons that we're finding difficulty in applying the TDR program, because of the cost of purchasing the TDRs, and the developers typically will make the run to the land use amendment. And finally, a graphic. We're going to look at an LR3 project, just for the purposes of negotiation, or not negotiation, for discussion, excuse me, wrong word. If a developer was to come in and request 12 units per acre.
Negotiating now.
Freudian slip.
We always have.
But this sometimes does look like a negotiation, and I think this is going to become apparent. The developer is asking for, in this case, in this example, for 12 units per acre. The staff recommendation by policy would be to recommend for the MR5 to use four TDRs and to take the workforce housing density bonus. That's based on the guidance, the lowest TDR can achieve, that you can achieve with the bonuses. You make full use of the TDRs. And so what happens, if you look at the leftmost column, the green is what you get by land use, the purple is what you get by TDRs, and the workforce housing density bonus, which is based on 100% of the, of the future land use in this case, they can only get to nine units. So they can't get there, so they automatically have to do a future land use to even entertain 12 units. Again, this is based on where they, the developer is asking. So the MR5 becomes the, the red line is for ease of, so you don't have to read the numbers. That's the, where the 12 units per acre is. So they would, you know, take the increase by the flu, up two more units per acre, then take advantage of all the TDRs, and then the density bonus on top of that, which actually gets them up to about 14. But you can see where this can then become a layer cake, if you will, of continuing to push the densities higher and higher. So this is a graphic example of what our density programs, when layered up, and again, we're talking about coming from LR3, and in this case, it would go to five, but still wind up at 12. A lot of people are saying, why doesn't it show up as 12? Because at 12, you can then take it so much higher, so. So, further illustration. Oh, and then actually, this is where you, the, what I brought in in yellow is actually what the workforce housing obligation is. This is the penalty, effectively, that a lower density takes an additional workforce housing units over that. All right, so just to reiterate, the obligation on density components, so this is, this is effectively both a formula and a graphic depiction. So your density bonus in TDRs, 34% of those are what have to be provided as workforce housing. That's what the code requires now. The workforce housing program bonus can get you an additional 17 to 34% requirement for workforce housing units. And then based on your future land use designation, it's a much smaller, only 2.5 to 8.7%. So it's a much smaller requirement on the land use itself. So if you do the density increase, you're automatically expanding the amount of lower units that you're requiring, and so, and the developers are savvy, and that's what they're figuring out, and that's what these requests are seeing, is they're using the layering, if you will, to manipulate through a land use and so forth. So that's what you've been seeing over the past few years, is this relatively complex site. And with that, I will actually hand it over to Maria, if I haven't melted your brains enough, and Maria can try and explain the workforce housing program to you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to be covering several different aspects of the workforce.
Excuse me, Maria, I apologize. Is this not the time to ask questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't see your, you, but if you have questions, please.
Okay. So on the layering effect, and I, you've noted it a few times, how they keep increasing density via TDRs and workforce housing, they're allowed specific density bonuses with those, which I think are a great thing for residents to get some workforce housing. I guess my question is, in that reference, is there something that staff would suggest? You said that it is very complex, and through layering, they're doing things. Now, is this inadvertently? Is this something that you want and allow? Is this something you feel needs looked at? I'm just trying to understand how you, as staff, feel about these.
We would love to modify it so that it's a cleaner break. I would tell you that the, the structure you have here is a function of cobbling on different programs through many years, and bolting on one and bolting on one. TDRs were there long before the workforce housing program existed, and then we found a way to add pieces and put things together. Maria will, if I may, Commissioner, will veer into that a little bit, and we have a recommendation for consideration. No, we require a lot of discussion with entities, but to be sure, quick about it, you know, we would look for a flat percentage across the board of all units, however they may achieve it, knowing that how you achieve the number of units itself is a discussion unto itself, but both parts, you know, we would recommend for consideration.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other lights, so we can continue. Thank you, Maria.
Okay, thank you. So, as I mentioned, I'm going to be covering a number of different aspects of the workforce housing program with you. I'm going to begin, though, with a brief history for the benefit of the, of your newer members. Okay, so you may know that the program was first adopted as a voluntary program, but was made a permanent program in 2006. You may recall that the change in economic conditions shortly thereafter led to some additional changes to the program in 2010 to lessen some of the requirements as a concession to the pressure that was being felt in the development industry at the time. And then in August of 2019, another set of changes were made to the program, this time to better align it with some of the county's objectives, so for example, including some incentives to incentivize the delivery of the workforce units as single-family for-sale units, to increase and update the, in Lufy, which had not been updated since 2006, and to add an additional disposition option for the workforce units, which was the exchange program, that actually had been recommended by industry and by the nonprofit builders as well, as another opportunity or another means to deliver units in the program. So those changes were made in 2019. I will mention that any time that the program has been, changes to the program have been envisioned, they have been vetted through an economic analysis to make sure that they did not cause the profitability of the developments to fall below acceptable levels, you know, in terms of testing. So why is workforce housing needed? I'm not going to go into detail on some of these slides in the interest of time, but I will mention, here are some data points that came out of the needs assessment that was commissioned by the Housing Leadership Council in 2021. And I will mention also that we've got some mid-year median sales figures up there. Those have just been updated in the last few days by the Realtors Association, which is our source for this information. So for the entirety of the year 2022, the single-family median sales price was 571,000, and for the combined group of condos and townhomes, the median sales price was 290,000 for the entirety of 2022. So those are trending down, but still significantly higher than we have seen in the last few years.
Commissioner Sacks has a question. I mean, Vice Mayor Sacks.
If I just hesitate, I might even go up to be chairman. Anyways.
I, I, here's the thing, I'll call you whatever you want me to call you. Just put a little label in front of, in front of me, though, so I don't.
Don't you laugh. Okay, here's a question. These are some pretty startling statistics, and, and they really come into force when we think about the need for housing here. Rent control is nowhere to be found in the state of Florida. Is, do we have these types of, if we, if you know, are these types of statistics that state that nearly 30% of Palm Beach County renters are severely cost burdened, spending more than 50% of their income on housing costs? Is that, do we know, and we may not, is that a result of not having rent control here in, in the state of Florida, or even in Palm Beach County?
Vice Mayor, I don't think we would know that ourselves. We could certainly check with Housing Economic Development to see if they have any information or data that's ever been provided that might help inform that.
Okay. And do we know, Patrick, whether this is something that is, is provincial or endemic only to this county, or is this also a burden to, to our neighbors to the South?
No, I would tell you, and I think we've all seen many stories of the homeownership or rental challenges across the state. We look at a number of other regions, probably used to think of it more in South Florida terms, but we see it in the, you know, west coast regions. It's everywhere, and you've, it's a challenge for so many, and we hear that from other professionals as we work in the field, whether it's FAC or other areas, we're hearing that very strongly.
So would it be fair to say that, that, that workforce housing in this, in the scarcity of rental units would be, would be saved by having a greater number of rental units at affordable prices?
Would tell you that we've always maintained from the beginning, the inclusionary program, our workforce program, A, only applies to unincorporated Palm Beach County, and only portions of unincorporated. So we're a piece of the puzzle. Would never tell you that this program will be there to solve all things. We would like to think that it takes a good bite, and it is, it serves a great purpose, but we could never tell you that it's the end-all, be-all, and will save things. We need so many people doing so many things to really significantly impact the challenges we're facing.
And although we're, we're talking about the, our PZ and B side of this equation, and I see HED is here in, in the audience, have you all ever, has there been sort of, or an analysis done as the impact of insurance is to, relative to the overall cost burdening of, of our communities? So either what's being required, you know, the apartment owners to spend on insurance, and also on the single-family side, and how much that eats up? Because we're saying we want 30, no more than 30% of somebody's income going to housing, but how much, how much of that gets then eaten, eaten up by insurance in our, in our environment here? And I don't expect you to have an answer today, but maybe something you guys can, can noodle.
Good. Good question. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
And I would like the number two, on how many, it says 57% of Palm Beach County workers are in service sector jobs. That's amazing, but how many of them, have, have we taken into account how many of them already own their home?
We'd have to take a look at the study and see if they broke it down further.
I'd love to.
Certainly provide you with a copy of the study as well.
Get that percentage of the 57%, please. Thank you.
All right, I see no more lights.
Okay. So a question we often get is, what is workforce housing? For the purposes of the county's program, it is housing for households in the range of 60 to 140% of the area median income, which in 2022 is $90,300. So that translates into an income range of $54,000 to just above $126,000 in order to qualify for the rental or the purchase of one of our workforce of one of our workforce housing units. And you can see what the sale prices are and what the rents are, the sort of the bookend prices for the rents here on this slide. So just an idea of how the program is set up, the framework for the program as it exists today. It has two components, a mandatory component and a voluntary component. The mandatory component applies to every project of 10 units or more in the urban suburban tier, or in other areas by condition of approval, if the board so chooses to impose such a condition. The voluntary component is that there is a density bonus, as Brian mentioned, available in exchange for an additional percentage, a greater percentage of workforce housing to be provided by the developer. The program offers a number of options, what we call the limited and the full incentive, that mostly affect the amount of density bonus that is available, but also the percentage that is required in the project. The required percentages can range anywhere from 2.5%, although I have to say I do not, in recent memory, recall any project at that percentage, to upwards of 20%, 25%. And we also have, in terms of the numbers of units that you might see, there is a provision since 2019 that if a project, a for-sale project chooses to provide its workforce units off-site as rentals, the number of units to be provided is increased by 50%. There is a 1.5x multiplier that applies, and that was something that industry suggested and the board at the time approved of and included in the code. In terms of how the workforce obligation is met, there's a number of different options. They can be provided by the developer onsite as part of their project, or off-site. They can be, one of the off-site options is through this exchange builder program that was added in 2019, essentially paying another developer to take on the obligation of your project. They also have the option to purchase and restrict a market rate unit, or to donate land, or to pay an in-lufy. You see the current in-lufy is listed there. And then in terms of the affordability period, yes?
Commissioner Woodward had a question.
Thank you. Yes, as far as the multiplier, it's 1.5x for the for-sale versus rental off-site. Does that come into play with any other, I guess if it's like a townhouse versus an apartment? I mean, because some of these are multifamily, but they're not like apartment units. What is, is it anything-
It has to do with the tenure, not with the unit type. So, right, if it's a for-sale unit, whether it's a condo or whatever, and it's turning into a rental, then the multiplier would apply.
So if it were like a row of townhomes that are going to be rentals, then they would be 1.5x the requirement?
Whatever, they would represent 1.5x of the obligation of the project that generated it, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One of our many complicating, flexible aspects.
Okay, we're good.
Other questions? Okay. And then, in terms of the affordability period, the for-sale units, and you heard some of it this morning from Housing and Economic Development, the for-sale units are restricted for 15 years recurring, meaning that if they are sold in that 15-year period, the 15-year clock starts again. The rental projects are restricted for a single 30-year period, and these restrictions are done by deed restriction on the properties. That's the framework of the program. I've been asked to go into more detail on a couple of aspects of the workforce housing program that are not necessarily immediately obvious, just for your benefit. One of them is the distinction between how the program applies in the zoning process versus in the land use amendment process. As Brian mentioned earlier, a project that has a density that the developer is happy with that density and what they can achieve with it can simply enter the zoning process. They are not required to buy TDRs, they are not required to take a workforce housing density bonus, those are all options available to them. They will have some sort of calculated workforce housing obligation, but they will have all sorts of options on whether that would be the limited or the full incentive, at the lower or the higher percentage. They also have options open to them on how to provide those units, the full range of options. That is distinctly different than what happens in a land use amendment. In a land use amendment process, the developer by definition does not have density sufficient to do what they want to do. And so they are entering your legislative process where you will make the decision at your discretion whether to grant that. And so because of that, the TDR policy, the 24B of the required use of transfer development rights kicks in. Because of that, we apply the full incentive or the highest percentage for the workforce housing, because the developer cannot today have that choice of limited or full because of what they're asking for. And because of that, we recommend that the board consider making those workforce units be onsite, because, again, in exchange for what you are being asked to grant for the development. So that is one area of distinction. Another is to explain exactly what happens, or how the outcome is affected by the disposition option of the developer. So we just have a little graphic to explain. If we have a developer with a piece of property that chooses to develop it residentially and is able to do so, they will get some density from their future land use designation. They will also, which will have some workforce housing obligation. They will also have that option, again, someone in the zoning process, the option to take a workforce housing density bonus, and that density bonus will also have a workforce housing obligation. And then finally, they will have the option to purchase transfer development rights if they're in the urban suburban tier, and that will also have a workforce housing obligation. Now, if the project chooses to do the workforce housing onsite, as you can see in this example, a quarter of the units are going to be restricted, and the remainder will be at market rate. However, the developer does have different disposition options, and if they choose, for example, to do those units off-site or to pay the in-lufy, then what occurs is that those units happen somewhere else, and all of the units in the parent project then become market rate units. Sometimes there's a misperception that the number of units in the parent project is reduced. That is not the case. All of the units remain there, and the obligation is met some other way. So that's something we wanted to make clear.
Yeah, I want to point out one thing that can get lost in the discussion. When we contemplate the construction of units onsite, you know, that's off that total number. When an applicant utilizes an off-site option, the units that would have been onsite are recreated as market rate units. So one could argue we have something of an incentive to utilize off-site programs, which is why we do everything we can to ensure that they're going to be built in the best way possible. But I just wanted to make clear that those units don't evaporate, that when the obligation is met off-site. And just so you know, as Maria mentioned too, when we do the economic modeling, any time we make changes, that's taken into consideration as well. When we develop the profitability standards and look at that, we contemplate the onsite versus off-site, and how profitable they may or may not be.
Okay, and then-
Excuse me, Commissioner Baxter.
Up until what point can they transfer during this process? Up until what point can they remove them from the workforce housing, and then make them like the rest of the units?
They are supposed to declare the chosen method at the time that they are approved for development. However, there is some leeway built into the code so that up to 25% of building permits, they have the opportunity potentially to come back in for a development order amendment and change that disposition option.
And what would you say the percentage of the time that that happens after it sees us?
I'd say not too many.
Not very often that I'm aware of, but note that the change was made to require the declaration of your option in 2019. So while we've been busy since 2019, I don't know if there's a super-long run of information to find that, but I'm not aware of any that have changed disposition.
That have gone from workforce housing to not be workforce housing anymore, because you're saying they're allowed up to 25%?
Well, in this particular example, yeah. If the units are disposed of in some other way, off-site or addressed through the in-lufy, then all of the units at the parent project that generated the obligation then become market rate units for the developer.
And I guess that's what I was asking, you know, how often does that actually occur?
Oh, how often do they go off-site?
Well, right, or does something change from the time we see it and approve? So many workforce housing units, are they held to that number?
Yeah, there aren't many of those that change after the board sees it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and you have actually received some more detailed numbers in an email from Mr. Rutter, so I won't go into these, but I will just give you the overview that more than 3,000 units have been obligated through the program. A little more than half of those are in place today. The others are primarily in the pipeline, and then some percentage around 12% or 13% have been addressed through the in-lufy to date. This is one example of a recent project. This is the Pine Ridge Project on Southern Boulevard near Jog Road. In this case, all 288 units at the site are actually restricted workforce housing units, and this project is in the leasing stage right now. Okay, so we wanted to go into a little bit more detail on the process itself, what the developer experiences, and then what staff does with the process. So, when a developer is contemplating a project, they will contact the planning division, and we will prepare a calculation for them based on the options that they're selecting, the density, the TDRs, and so forth, and provide that calculation to them. That is part of the package that comes to the board when a project, if a project is to be approved by the board. And then, if it is approved, it will be part of the documentation approving the project, so that stays in the record. If the units are not addressed through the in-lufy process and are actually going to be built, then there is a restrictive covenant that is required for the property prior to its first building permit, to ensure that the restriction is tied to the property. And then there are a couple of thresholds for the delivery of those units over time as the project is developed. Then, once the units are built, the developer is to contact the, in the case of the for-sale units, to contact the Housing and Economic Development so that they can do, as I described this morning, the certification of the buyers and basically connect the buyers with the available units. In the case of rentals, the property managers are supposed to contact the Planning, Zoning, and Building Department so that we can equip them with the information that they need in regard to the rent schedules and the income calculations and categories, so that they know what to use as they certify the buyers, the tenants. It is their responsibility to certify the tenants as eligible for the program. So that is in the development stage. And then when we move to the monitoring stage, the for-sale units are deed restricted, so if there were to be a sale, it should be showing up in a title search for units, at least units that are going to be financed. The property appraiser is made aware that restricted units have been sold, and the planning division conducts an annual reporting cycle with owners of workforce restricted units to make sure the person is still in the unit, that they haven't sold it somehow, or that they haven't rented it out, because that is not consistent with the intent of the program. With regard to rental units, the way that the program is set up currently, this is a two-step process. In terms of the compliance of an individual unit, when a tenant is going to move in, the planning division is supposed to receive from the property manager, at the time the tenant moves in, what we call a lease addendum, which is a documentation that indicates that the rent, the income has been tabulated and verified, that the correct income category of our four categories has been identified, and that the correct rent has been applied. That lease addendum is supposed to be sent to us for verification. Then, in terms of the overall compliance of the project with the four or three, depending, or two, depending on the type of approval, income categories, the four buckets, as we call them, we are supposed to receive an annual report where we can see that the individuals for whom we have received the lease addenda are in fact listed there, and that they are renting the units in the appropriate categories. So that's the theory. The reality has been much, much different. What we have experienced, certainly in the last couple of years, as rents have increased relative to the workforce housing rent schedule, is that we are not getting good compliance. We are not receiving the lease addenda in many cases. And let me say, we do have some very good property managers that are working very hard to provide us with what we need, what we need, but that is not the case universally. So what we are seeing is that lease addenda are not being provided. We don't know that we haven't received it until we get the annual report, and there is a tenant listed there that was not shown previously. So then we are working backwards to try to obtain the information, to determine compliance, and to get the correct information in place. What we have found from time to time is that by the time we get this sorted out, if we discover that someone has been miscategorized and charged too much, the tenant is gone, and there is no way to credit that. So those are the compliance issues that we continue to work through. The other thing that we are finding, again, especially in the last couple of years with regard to the higher market rents, is that, and with regard to the rent charged, is that things are being taken out from under the rent and pulled out and charged separately. We don't see this until we happen to go in to look to see if a credit has been issued, and we discover that, sure, the rent that's reported, that may have been reported, was correct for our schedule, but these additional charges are showing up, which means when taken together, the tenant is paying more than they should be pursuant to the workforce housing program. So we've been working through that as well. We have a similar situation with our utility credits, where they are not necessarily being applied appropriately. And then, finally, the program, the code does provide for a broad, for enforcement broadly, but in terms of specific compliance thresholds, you know, is 95% compliance good enough? Is 100% required? Is 80% good enough? What are those numbers? And what are the specific corrective actions that should be put in place? That information, that's a level of detail that was not contemplated, I presume, in the code, and that's another area that we are working on. That should be wrapped up hopefully this week. So with that, I'll turn it back to Kevin.
Yeah, just a brief transition back to me, and then Maria has two slides to kind of wrap up the workforce housing program discussion. But up until this, oh, yes, Mayor.
One second. First, I want to take a point of personal privilege and acknowledge that we have Representative Catherine Waldron in the room. So, good afternoon, Representative. And then Commissioner Baxter, you have the floor.
What currently happens if we find they are out of compliance with the workforce housing numbers, rents, or we find they're trying to charge in other ways to make up those monies?
Right. Currently, what is happening, what we're mostly focused on is overcharges, and so we are requiring them to issue credits and to provide documentation that the credits have been issued. That's the primary thing. We are happy when we get to that step. The first level of problem that we have is not having the information. So not knowing, not having the documentation of the income and the rent, but if we do get that, then requiring credits. The code does, though, and this is what we hope to wrap up this week, the code does provide for some other options, including, for example, tolling. So adding, if they fail to fill a unit for six months, or to demonstrate that they filled a unit for six months, that six months may be able to be added at the end of their 30-year term, for example. That's another option, that kind of thing. Of course, fines, things like that through quote enforcement are also an option.
Have we ever looked at potentially, I know with most programs, forgive me, Mayor, is it okay, of maybe having a reporting of the home renter itself quarterly? I mean, I don't want it to be something burdensome, but just something where they can say, hey, they're doing this, or they are overcharging, or whatnot?
Yeah, exactly. And actually, we're going to touch on some of that in the next few slides, but one of the things that we would like to do is to return to the way the program was actually set up in 2006, which was that the tenant wasn't moving in until the county had verified the information. That was pulled back because it was thought potentially to be a hindrance to the property manager's operations, and we understand that, but this is also not acceptable. But in terms of arming the prospective tenant with information, we are looking at doing something, we'd like to do something that we do now on the for-sale side, which is in the marketing office of the developer. They need to post information about the availability of workforce housing units. That should be the case also for rentals, even though the code currently does not require it. So that kind of thing. Also, the documentation that the property manager sends to us, we are turning that into more of a descriptive document and requiring a copy to be provided- into more of a descriptive document and requiring a copy to be provided to the tenant so that they know and have all the contact information and understand how the calculations were done, so that they, again, help essentially to police the program as well.
Commissioner Maria, you recognize?
Not a question, just a comment. I know you all have heard me say this before, but we do need better checks and balances, and I realize that, you know, the industry pushed back against us, and that's why it changed, only to find us in the Palm Beach Post, and I don't want that in the future. So we need to find out what our options are, and industry needs to come on board with that. And I know the industry is in the room, and I apologize, mine sounded a little strong, but, you know, we're giving bonuses to people to build these units. They need to stay in the inventory, and as many checks and balances as we can put in place, we need to. Thank you.
Right, I think we're good.
All right, thank you. So again, Maria, I'll have two more slides with some of those proposed conceptual changes to the program, but up until now, we've kind of done an overlay of growth management, the comp plan, the policies that we have today. So now the remainder of the presentation will be kind of more forward-looking and some potential course of actions for staff to move forward with, and then, you know, come back before the board again, but, so I just wanted to highlight this transition now to the more forward-looking piece.
Okay, so returning to the workforce housing program, we've got four areas for consideration. The first area are, again, to address these monitoring challenges that we have been describing, we want to, as I mentioned, return back to that pre-2010 program where properties will not essentially get credit for compliance until and unless the information is in our hands and accurate and complete and can be verified. The second has to do with what Commissioner Baxter brought up with regard to making information available about the units so that the tenants are, in essence, helping with the enforcement of the program by understanding what is and is not available at a particular project, and what the program actually entails, the rents charged, and that kind of thing. And then, as I mentioned, working on the specific corrective actions, so we have a schedule which will, of corrective actions that will help us not only incentivize compliance, but also make sure we treat projects in a similar manner to different projects. And then, so those are things that are actually in process now, you will see those as code changes for your consideration in the very near future. And then more broadly, we have three other areas of, I wouldn't say recommendations necessarily, but concepts that you may want to consider going forward with regard to the workforce housing program. First is to simplify the program and simplify it in the context of the other things you've heard today, the plan amendment process and the transfer development rights process. We think the most expedient way to do that is with some sort of a flat rate to be applied to a project as a whole. There could be different flat rates, but to do away with this layering and calculations within the layering. There is an exchange option, there are two exchange options in the code currently. There is one that was put in for a developer that maybe wasn't sure what they were going to do. That one has never been used, there's never been any inquiries about it. We think that one can be eliminated, again, further simplifying that portion of the code, and potentially to allow developers to declare two alternative disposition options at the outset, kind of a Plan A and a Plan B. The reason for that is they may be wanting to do one type of disposition option, but may not have that quite worked out, but rather than hold up their project, they can declare Plan A and Plan B, and if A doesn't work out, without having to come back and go through a development order amendment on their project. So that would be the intent of that. Now, in terms of actually increasing the number of workforce housing units, again, a flat rate, that rate could be, if the economic analysis supports it, could potentially be higher than it is today. For your consideration also, eliminating the limited incentive option, which is the one with the lower percentages, and that could be replaced with, again, a lower flat rate potentially. Something the board has discussed previously is doing away with the INLU option potentially for the purpose of actually delivering units. Another item for your consideration might be expanding the workforce housing program beyond just the urban suburban tier to apply to developments in all tiers. And something we actually get a number of inquiries about is potentially expanding the program to allow very small projects access to the program. Right now, we turn them away, someone wanting to do seven or eight units, they want a little bit of a density bonus, and they're willing to restrict units. We say, no, you're not eligible for workforce, so that might be another opportunity, not that it would generate a lot of units, but it might be an opportunity there as well. And then, in terms of potentially increasing specific types of units that there may be interest in, for example, we already have some incentives for single-family detached homes, but we hear a discussion of why aren't there any units, workforce housing units in the Glades, where that may be something you would want to incentivize. Or why aren't there, why doesn't the program address the lower category below the 60%? There are other affordable housing programs in the county that do that, but there are many people that we hear from regularly that qualified two years ago. The categories have moved up, their income has not moved up as much, and they are no longer eligible. So that 40% to 60% category may be something you want to incentivize in, for the developers. Reinstituting the middle category for sale units. When the code was amended in 2019, the middle category was dropped because the price associated with those units was essentially very close to market rate, and there was essentially no interest in the public in buying a restricted unit when for roughly the same amount, you could get an unrestricted unit. So the middle category was dropped as a requirement, and the percentage obligation was sort of spread out over the other category. So that may be something to consider now that the market shifts have occurred. Another thing we think might be helpful is to create a separate price category for town homes. The reason for that is, right now, our for-sale price, for a long time, all we got at the for-sale price, the high, at those levels, were town homes. We think if a separate town home category was created, it might be possible to have those be a little less expensive, and maybe have a slightly more expensive single-family category to incentivize more development of those single-family homes if they could be a little more expensive. This, again, things that need a lot more deliberation, a lot more input from the public, from the board, but something to consider. And then, finally, to set the default option to onsite for workforce housing, so the developer that chose not to do the units onsite would have to request that deviation from that as part of the development process. And with that, I'll turn it back to Kevin.
All right, thank you, Maria. Okay, so now shifting a little bit into, we've spent a lot of time on the workforce housing program, but looking a little more broadly at the comprehensive plan and our policies. So three thoughts are, again, and I alluded to this earlier today, but trying to shift our comprehensive plan, specifically our future land use element, to one that recognizes that greenfield development is limited in nature, and a lot of what we're seeing is redevelopment, so have stronger policy guidance, so when we come before the board with our recommendations, we have more solid policy to point to when we're making our recommendations, and also the potential for an additional future land use category within the urban suburban tier that we'll cover shortly. Second, and again, we mentioned this earlier, the importance of an enhanced discussion on compatibility, and Brian will run through a few slides on that in a couple moments. And then, coming up with a methodology, which we've started a framework for, to identify areas where we feel the density increases are most appropriate, and potential locations for that, what I'm calling the new future land, the variable flu, which we'll cover in a few moments.
Vice Mayor has a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Going back to fundamentals, Kevin, the shift comprehensive plan focus from greenfield to redevelopment, we're talking about possibly, you know, I'm looking at the ag reserve, from agricultural land to repurpose some development that has not done well, like as we spoke about earlier with the brownfields. Is that what you, is that what this is refer, when you say greenfield?
So the intent, and I mentioned earlier this morning, or was it this afternoon? Before lunch, the focus of the policy modifications we're talking about are specific to the urban suburban tier. Obviously, we'll have the March workshop on the ag reserve, and we have the exurban and rural tiers that are designed to be more rural in nature. So when we're talking about appropriate areas for higher density and intensity, this discussion is focused on the urban suburban tier and even more particular areas of the urban suburban tier.
So specifically, what does it mean when you say greenfield?
Vacant land.
Exactly, vacant land, right.
Vacant land that is not...
We don't use greenfield anymore.
I'll just use vacant land, yes.
That is not being used for agriculture?
No, it could be.
Or?
It could be, right.
I mean, we're looking at, looking at greenfield, meaning agricultural, or those lands, vacant lands, that have no construction on them?
Essentially, what I meant by that term, and I'll modify that for future presentations, is, so let's think of the Westlake area. So that was a large piece of land that didn't have any homes on it, didn't have any commercial. It was just new development of undeveloped land. When I'm talking about redevelopment, I'm talking about these, you have smaller parcels that are kind of in between a residential neighborhood and a shopping center, it's basically large swaths of vacant land.
I understand, thanks.
Is what we don't have anymore, so. Right, and just to highlight, staff has made, and the board has adopted, a number of changes in projects over the years, so didn't want to just look, highlight the things we want to change, also things that we have done. There have been a number of comprehensive plan amendments over the years. One aspect of development that's unique in Palm Beach County that I'm not aware of many other jurisdictions that do this is, most of our commercial properties, so with our commercial future land use designations along our major corridors, most of them have an underlying residential component to the future land use. A lot of the properties on Okeechobee that have a commercial high flu designation have an underlying eight units to the acre. So one of the changes in 2020 was, it used to be that if you wanted to develop a portion of the site utilizing that underlying residential, you could only apply the density calculation from the area where the residential was going. To make it easier for potential redevelopment of commercial centers, we have a lot of underutilized commercial space, you can now use the, for the density calculation purposes, that underlying residential from the entirety of the property. So modifications like that have been made over the years. Recently, I mentioned the Fountain MUPD project that the board did approve on the south side of Okeechobee. That project was around 25 units per acre, which was one of the higher-density, the projects that have been approved by the board. We do have our urban redevelopment area, and Brian will run through briefly a few slides on that area of the county and how development works there. And then also, just to point out that most local governments in Palm Beach County don't have a mandatory workforce housing program, so that's something that the board, you know, I'm not going to talk about that one again, Maria did a great job, but just to highlight that. And now I will turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Kevin.
Excuse me, Commissioner Bernard has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to leave and pick up the kids soon, so, but I am going to come back, so, because it's all about water. But I do have some questions, not questions, but some statements regarding some of the changes to the proposed workforce housing that I'd like to make before I leave. Just, you know, I know that, you know, we've got these changes in front of us. I do believe that it's important for us to, although we're having the workshop today, but I do believe that it's important for us to have a workshop with industry, and before we make some of these recommendations, but to have that workshop with industry, and then also after the workshop with industry, and then to do the economic analysis of some of the changes that are acceptable, and to work with industry, and then for us to come back and really dissect this and really work hard to try to get this right, because we're going to come back and eventually work on the bond allocation process, and what we don't want to do is create changes that hinders us in the future of creating units. So what I'm hoping that we're able to do is do the bond allocation process, make some of these changes, the economic analysis, all at once, so in that way, when we're making decisions regarding the workforce housing, we're able to make sure that we're all on the same page. So that's my hope that we're able to do, because at the end of the day, we want to create units, and units are so important for us to do, and if we do that, then working with industry, since we've worked collaboratively to get to this point, I believe that that will help us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for sharing your comments with us, and I think they're all very well advised. Appreciate that. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I agree, if we're going to start looking at potential changes, the people who have to work with us and staff and everyone involved should definitely be involved in this conversation so that we're not coming back or having to come back and fix issues later.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxter. All right, you can continue with your presentation.
All right, the urban redevelopment area. This is a strategy that was first recommended to the board in 2002, it was adopted in the plan in 2005. The boundary you see, and I'm going to go ahead and just jump to the next one, there's a 35-square-mile area in the center of Palm Beach County just west of I-95, and it's effectively the areas west of West Palm Beach, West Palm Beach is, you know, is the one that's kind of arc over it, and then all the way down to Lake Worth, and then it goes as far west to some places as the Turnpike. But it's essentially the post-World War II or the first-tier suburbs of Palm Beach County. There's a lot of municipalities in there, but this boundary was selected in 2005 because it was, many of the county's redevelopment initiatives were there. And, you know, you already heard about Westgate, that's one of the things, it has the airport, it has some of the industrial areas. But the idea was to concentrate and to collect all of the county's redevelopment initiatives and put them in one area, and to identify them, and then use that as effectively a targeted area. The analysis that was done, we actually hired Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council as our consultant in 2006 and 2007, and we got a master plan, and we had looked at commercial corridors. They initially just looked at Congress and military, those two, A and B, and the analysis that was ultimately done said that these are the areas that were most likely to redevelop. Those commercial corridors that had been there, that were somewhat dated, maybe in need of a facelift, or were ripe for redevelopment, was the phrase that was thrown around. And so we noticed that there was nodes at the major intersections, there was an infill condition in between those nodes along the corridor, and that those were the areas that it was likely to redevelop over time. It was a long-term vision that the board ultimately adopted. But what I wanted to point out was, the rest of the URA, even though it had different incentives, like you had some additional transferable development rights that were generally available, this was the key focus. So those areas are designated as the priority redevelopment areas. And so, we used a lot of urban forum concepts that were given to us by Treasure Coast, and for lack of a better term, this is an area that has lacked any sort of a downtown and urban condition, because there's a lot of different municipalities, there's sometimes competing interests, or not a, yes, there is some level of sprawl because of when it was built, but it's lacked, and it was an attempt to come up with a cohesive vision of what it could look like to better the corridor's appearance, and so it was certainly more intense. Most of our regulations that we have had since the advent of zoning in this county in the 50s is effectively low-density suburban, you know, sprawl, for lack of a better term, and that's how we've evolved. So now we're at the condition that we are looking at a suburban retrofit, and how do we begin to make these into places? That's fundamentally what this master plan did. And so you could only effectively build back what you had under the current rules. They had a CH with an underlying eight, so nine times out of 10, if, why would you tear down to just get back to what you had? So the idea was to throw a lot of incentive at it. So that was what the URA regulations do. They allowed for mixed use. At the time this was adopted, mixed use was very hot. Of course, we realized as financing fell apart, mixed use is a lot harder to actually get financed than we may have initially believed, but it was also pedestrian and transit-enabling. This was the beginning of Palm Beach County beginning to talk about looking at ways that people did not have to have a car to get around, and so these were already along bus routes and so forth. So the county, to fast-forward through this, adopted new land use designations and zoning. They were something that we had not done before, they were not just put into the plan, put into the code, there were rezonings and land use amendments done to help make the implementation a little bit easier. They were, the idea was to reward compliance with the master plan vis- Uh, they were, the idea was to reward compliance with the master plan vision, uh, with a much-reduced, uh, review process. Uh, and then also, if somebody could not necessarily fully conform with the, the, the adopted vision of the board, they had the opportunity to come back and ask the board for relief from those standards, because quite frankly, there's a lot of old development varying conditions, parcel sizes, considerations, and it was intended to be, for lack of a better term, a safety valve. So in the priority redevelopment areas, there's a sharp increase in residential density. There was some increase in non-residential density contemplated. It is, uh, you may have heard the planning terms form-based. This was very much buildings towards the street, more urban-scale things we had not done. It was also very deliberately confined so that we could understand it, and then the idea was roll it out further. The unfortunate thing with that 35-square-mile area of the entirety of the URA is it pulled the air out of the room for the rest of redevelopment. The rest of the county still also has gone through a need to redevelop. So you've seen at land use and zoning, you've seen some struggles with how do we account for, but this plaza came in to redevelop. Some of you may recall the old Lenox North Beach project that's now been built. That was an old commercial strip center along US-1. That was a real struggle, and it, it really had to, it was one of the first projects that really tried to maximize the densities, as we've seen on some of the other charts. However, I did want to point out, there was this...
Okay, Brian, Commissioner Baxter has a question.
Sure.
The previous slide, now, I'm assuming you're just using this as an example, or is this still out there for an area to be redeveloped?
The way that the county has looked at this is the county threw incentives at it for an individual property owner or a future property owner to come in and realize the potential, and they would then decide to come forth and use these. It was not an, an attempt by any means to say, "You must go away, you must cease your use." It was simply, here is a tool, and the county's main tool in these is incentive. So we can incentivize the ultimate development form, uh, and so that's how the county went about doing it. That was effectively what we had.
Did the incentives work, I guess, is my question?
No.
Uh, we've seen redevelopment, or some development. Uh, it did in the beginning, because we rolled it out in the middle of a recession. Uh, and in the late, the latter days, we got auto parts stores, we got self-service storages. But the next slide is actually an example of the, it has an approval, they're looking for financing at the moment, but...
Um, and just to add, elaborate one point of what Brian was saying. In addition to the incentives, there was also a modification of the future land use and zoning designations along those corridors. So the urban center and urban infill are future land use designations that are only allowable within the priority redevelopment area. So we do have a lot of properties with those future land use designations, and those are unique. Brian was talking about more form-based, in that they don't have a specified density maximum. All our other residential future land use have a, have a cap. That is more guided by, um, height limitations and the urban form of the site. So I'll let Brian talk about the next slide, but this was one that came, that was approved by the board, um, at about, I think, 51 units an acre.
Yes. All right, so this is Southport. This board saw this back about a year and a half ago. Southeast corner Military Trail and Main Streets, about 1.8 acres. It was two parcels, had two different land use designations. Uh, 92 units on 1.8 acres. This is an urban density. This is 51 units to the acre if this project gets built. Uh, it's a very unusual project. It absolutely maxed out everything you could do with the district. It's a green, or certified building, uh, the densities we've already talked about. Uh, but also, key in this, when factored in with those, uh, corridors, was, it wasn't just to give away the density, it was to also look at the compatibility concerns. And so that was very key in all this, but this is even an unusual project in that there's, and one of the things I haven't mentioned about the URA, is it has a flat rate of workforce housing requirements, because you don't have a numeric density. You don't get like eight units to the acre, you just get the form. So in this case, they elected five stories. It's the number of units you could fit within the five stories, you could park it, meet all the other, you know, development requirements. That's why the unit count is so much higher on this. There was just no way, and it was one of the problems that we identified at the back of the URA master plan process, that there was no way to begin to get to urban densities. And we've now, here we are 15 years later, we've now learned that, yes, we've done the brain damage, and that's what you're hearing today. This is one type of approach that could be done. Now, at 51 units to the acre, that's a whole different, uh, issue in terms of compatibility. It is a fundamental issue in land use and zoning, we've already talked about this a little bit. Uh, I'm going to try and avoid using the word greenfield, but all of our regulations, other than the URA, are oriented for suburban-scale development, the first, uh, go-around, if you will. We're now in an infill and redevelopment world. We've got a few parcels that are underdeveloped, that will develop, they can use our regulations. But it means that our compatibility tools are sitting somewhere in the past. And so we've typically done, uh, issues where we have separate, separated and segregated uses in landscaping, buffers, that's typically the tool you'll hear at zoning. Uh, that is our, our major way of achieving compatibility. So what we're looking at, and we need to be better about this, uh, we have had some long discussions over the years as, as a board and staff and the development community. Uh, largely compatibility comes down to three things: context. What is the setting in which the development is going into? What is the transition between the uses? And then what is the separation and the spatial definition? The way landscape buffers typically work is they give up space, they put vertical trees, and they sort of block the view as the, it's, it's an approach, it works very well in suburbia. It doesn't necessarily work, if you think if you just walk outside, you see buildings that back up to alleys, and you see dumpsters, and no enclosures, and utility lines, and all sorts. That's urban compatibility, you just back up to each other. We're not there, but that's the kind of level of, we need to find the point in between to start achieving the densities, and we need to respect the neighborhood that these new projects or redevelopment projects are going into. So we recognize it's a critical thing, we're not going to sit here and float, go with rampant density without talking about how do we temper it, and ensure that the impact will, uh, be not what it should, or not what it could be, uh, with the numbers we're talking about. So, uh, earlier, Vice Mayor had asked about what is compatibility. Here is the actual Florida statute, uh, and I will read it just so everyone has it. It's a very awkwardly worded definition, but that's usually how statute seems to read. Uh, "It's a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time such that no use or condition is unduly impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition." I've read this definition hundreds of times, and I still trip on it.
What does "unduly" mean?
That, that's usually what the courts wind up getting asked to answer, Mayor. Later, it talks about adjacency. I wanted to point out that the...
Excuse me, Brian? I think actually might be, uh, you know, uh, an interesting, or question. When we talk about compatibility, and a lot of times we'll get into a meeting, people will talk about, "Well, I'm a single-family, that's a town home, they're incompatible, because they're different styles." Well, how does, what does, what does the, um, statute say about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so that's a great point and great question, because, right, just because you have a single-family home doesn't mean anything that's not a single-family home is necessarily incompatible. So, for instance, if, if there was a, if there's a existing single-family neighborhood, let's say, um, offset from military, and there's a commercial strip center between that neighborhood and, and Military Trail, that, it's broadly enough written that we wouldn't say a redevelopment that had, say, multifamily or townhomes is necessarily incompatible. If it was a 15-story building and it was going to cast, you know, houses in shade all day long, that's, that's where we start evaluating. It's a lot of to-do with the transition between the uses, not necessarily that different uses are automatically incompatible. It's how one can, you know, have impacts to the other.
So, so residential is, generally would be compatible with other residential?
Generally, you think of, right, residential use is compatible with residential uses, but we would still, like I mentioned, the example of putting...
You may put some buffers in, or you may do some things that have transition. You may do a step-down if you're going from a four-story building to, up against a single-family neighborhood, you may want to step it down, so you're only at two or three stories when you get to, to closer to it.
And a good, um, municipal example of this one, because I remember when the project was going through the approval process with the city of Delray Beach, is Worthing Place. On, uh, it's on the south side of Atlantic and downtown Delray, and it was fair bit high, I think it's six stories, which, if you know the character of, of Atlantic Avenue, it's lower scale. So it was very controversial, but honestly, when I walked down Atlantic or drive down Atlantic, visually, I don't even see the building, because they put a nice public plaza in front, very well landscaped, so you really kind of have to look for it, and you're like, "Oh." So even, like, to your point, even larger structures, they can be designed in ways that address some of those concerns.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I, when I used to serve on the planning board for the city of West Palm Beach, and we were doing downtown, uh, development, I think they came in, in, I mean, a number of times, um, you know, experts had come in and advised that, you know, ultimately, I think, I can't, and somebody else, I'm sure there's real planners in here, but I want to say, it's like, once you get above three or four stories, you don't even see the rest of the building, because your eye just doesn't, doesn't go there, you don't look that far up. And so, you know, a 20-story building looks very similar to somebody who, you know, with an eight-story building.
Yeah, or even, um, so I mentioned earlier, I used to live in the, the Strand in downtown West Palm, and because the way the building steps, when you're actually on the sidewalk on Olive, it doesn't feel like a 15-story building right next to you, because, you know, it steps back, and, right, the visual components.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Baxter, and then Vice Mayor Sacks.
So addressing a neighborhood fitting into an area isn't obviously defined in this compatibul, in this compatibility definition. So then how would we try to help our residents in what would be considered by this definition compatible, to stay within those? And I will give you a, for instance, um, so somebody had mentioned earlier, Westlake has been constructed, has been, um, its own city within the sight of homes that exist on one-acre lots, one-acre-plus lots, I should say. And when they drive through, because nobody just lives in their neighborhood, so they, no amount of buffers really buffers them forever, only when they're in their own home. So then they go and drive through, um, an area that they would deem undesirable, and then they complain a lot about it. So that's where, I guess, when I say compatibility, I'm talking about it actually fitting the area and the residents around the area, so that one isn't causing problems for the other, and vice versa. So I'd like to know, um, when we start these discussions, how we can try to help, um, residents on both sides be very happy, to make sure that it fits the, um, overall feel of the area. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks, and then, uh, B. Commissioner Woodward.
So interesting, Commissioner Baxter, because it seems like no matter what you build in any neighborhood, there's going to be some criticism. Somebody is not going to like what we just put there. You said something interesting, though, when you said, when you talked about, "This is the past, we're looking at the future." Compatibility really comes down to, in an urban area, you can have the alleys, and I'm thinking of West Palm Beach, I mean, we don't have buffers between buildings here in West Palm Beach. It's, I love the urban feel and the energy that you get, because you have this, this, this combination of people, commercial rental units, uh, taverns, music, all this action in this area, in this urban area. Compatibility becomes different in a, in a rural tier, or a suburban tier. Uh, so I guess it's up to you land planners to tell us that something is not compatible with a certain urban or suburban tier, uh, because it doesn't fit that definition. And it seems like, I like that definition, it's kind of, you know, you can, you can play with it a little bit. Uh, so it just depends on what type of, of community you're, you're going to, you're going to deal with, you're going to build in. Churches and synagogues go well in some communities, but not in others. And so I guess it's up to the land planners to help us, so that we don't put, uh, and, and I guess this is where zoning comes in, where we don't put certain uses in areas that are not compatible with, with whatever we have already there. I think that's a great challenge, and I appreciate what you said about, "This is the past, now we're looking at the future." And this word is so important, because it has a lot to do with making our constituents happy. Sometimes it's a little more challenging than others, but at least we try to make the uses compatible. So I, I think that was a very good point. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you recognize?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I live in Boca, I live in the city of Boca, uh, and I must say, before taking this job, I never spent so much time counting floors at every traffic light that I stop at. It's just something, I mean, I live in a very developed part of the area, and, and I guess we'd be left to greenfields or vacant land, if there's any. But I'd just like to say, as far as compatibility, uh, again, I pay attention a lot when I drive at all of my neighboring communities, because I didn't pay that much attention before, and because it felt very compatible, and most of the reason for that is because of landscaping. It's because of the architectural details that look a lot like, you know, my single-family home. I have 55-plus community next to me, have apartments next to me, townhomes, I mean, it's very blended. It's just not that noticeable, because the compatibility is the look. And, you know, there's multiple stories that I never noticed before, too. So I think as far as the, in the urban-suburban tier, uh, more compatibility would be things like, you know, landscape buffers, setbacks, like you mentioned. Even having higher stories, they exist all around me that I actually didn't notice, because they're not like right on top of me. And a lot of that has to do with the planning that goes into, into this, and the parking requirements, and, you know, that type of, of feeling. And it, most of these buildings, once they're built, even though a lot of people are very upset when construction is happening, once it's done and finished and painted and trees everywhere, you know, it's, it's a part of the community. And I think that's the goal for compatibility. You know, we, we need to get more units built, and, you know, as long as we make them look nice and they, they blend with the area, I think that's really the goal, and people will be okay with it, I think.
Thank you. Patrick, you had a comment?
Very quickly, Mayor, thank you. You know, as the board dives into the topic of compatibility, I want to call your attention to Senate Bill 102, which has been filed, which overarching housing bill, 93-odd pages, but call your attention specifically to three provisions within it. One, uh, local government may not restrict the density of a development under the preemption below the highest allowed in the jurisdiction. Two, government may not restrict the height of a development below the highest within a mile. Three, those applications will be done administratively, so there'll be no public hearing process for them. That's, you know, perspective language, it's in a bill that's filed.
Start on this.
And as you contemplate and hear all that, and absorb this, and engage in this discussion, you know, this is, I'll call it the other end of the pendulum that's out there in the world. So, just something else to consider.
No, not today. It's for another day, another time. But thank you for sharing. Can we tell you how disappointed we are? But no, somebody's got to throw a wet blanket on everything. All right. Do you get invited to a lot of parties? Okay, we're back to compatibility, I'm sorry. You don't have to answer that question.
I never, I never thought compatibility was going to be the, the saving... All right, so, I, you, you all took the bait magnificently. What we would recommend is to come back with, for lack of a better term, a compatibility toolkit, something we will go back, that we will work out. But the recommendation would be that the board further defines and clarifies what compatibility is. I've done a study, it's not out there, it's just internal looking around. We, as we were trying to come forward with land use amendments over the past few years, uh, most of the jurisdictions that are, you know, Orange, Hillsborough County, the ones that are comparably sized, larger, urbanizing counties, they have gone further and defined compatibility further. And they say it is not the same as, it is not identical to, but they talk about it in terms of how that transition is. A great example, I wish I'd, I thought to put a, a slide in here of it, is if you think of the convention center, and then you go a couple of streets away, it's a single-family, old historic neighborhood, the, the so-called state streets of West Palm. But when they put the convention center in, they took and lined with some townhomes. And that is the transition between the massive bulk that is the back of that convention center and the garage, that is the way that they achieve compatibility. The, the townhouse, if you will, is a building that it serves as a compatibility buffer, but it's a transition. You see only a slightly more intense housing type, which then hides the bulk of a very large convention center. Those are the types of techniques, we actually used that on the Lenox North Beach. That's a three-story, staff had actually advocated for four stories on, uh, US-1. Uh, but at the back, it's... it's two stories. So that's the type of tool that we are looking at, is it's not just going to be landscaping, it's going to be building bulk, height, and mass. I also want to mention, the causes of impacts in compatibility are BTO, not Bachman-Turner Overdrive, but building bulk, if you will, traffic and operations. So the hours of operation, the nuisance-type issues that come up in zoning, those are the kinds of things that ultimately are affecting compatibility, and they all affect something differently. I have an example up here, where a convenience store has a very small building footprint, so the building bulk is very small, yet it has higher traffic and operational impacts. So it depends on which perspective you're looking at it from, whereas you could get a self-storage, like very large, very bulky building, much like the convention center, and yet it has virtually no traffic and no one's ever there. So these are different things that compatibility needs to address. Typically, people don't object to a self-storage unit as long as it has a block out, you know, air and sunlight and so forth. So those are some examples of sort of the spectrum of what compatibility will need to consider. Also, I just wanted to point out, just so you're aware of it, we have a definition out in the code, and I'm not picking on the code, it's just, this is an example of how antiquated some of our stuff can be. We say an incompatibility buffer is a situation where any, a density difference of more than two dwelling units per acre occurs. That requires an incompatibility buffer, that's the, the buffers you're typically debating, and zoning is what goes in those buffers. So things like that are going to need to be addressed. It's going to be a comprehensive assessment that we would recommend the unit. So for that, we need to establish context, transition, separation, and we need to look at and consider physical design, the compatibility in all land use decisions and zoning decisions as well. And one of our recommendations could be to come up with a generalized matrix of what some of those things are, so everyone understands in advance, whether it's a land use amendment, the various densities. And so some of those images up there may actually be, you know, things that you want to, you know, understand and discuss publicly, set policy so everyone understands what the expectation of compatibility is. That's what I have seen in different jurisdictions, is that ultimately the best step is for the jurisdiction to just establish further guidance on what they feel is compatibility in their jurisdiction. And I think you have that mechanism under the statute, so that's something that would come forward. And also some visualization tools, strategies, examples like Kevin's referenced, I've referenced, those are all good examples. Sometimes it's easier to talk about real-world examples and how they work. Those are things we want to bring back to you. And with that, I will finally be quiet and give that back to you.
Down to the final five slides, yes. I know you've had a long day. So, we were talking earlier, and just to, it's very, I probably shouldn't have even included this graphic, it's a little hard to read, but this was highlighting one of those areas in the unincorporated where there is the commercial high, like I mentioned, has an underlying eight dwelling units per acre, and these are large commercial shopping centers near military and Okeechobee. These, generally speaking, are kind of those nodes and areas where we feel are most appropriate for, you know, potential higher-density redevelopment. So one undertaking that, that staff thinks is a worthy effort would be to do more of a GIS assessment, have vari- varying criteria of looking at where we have our, I put higher capacity transit, because when you think of high-capacity transit, that's more like your commuter rail, that's, that's all within the municipalities in Palm Beach County. So we don't have any Tri-Rail stations, our Bright Line stations, we have two of those right now, both are in municipalities. Even most of our, our most frequent headways in terms of bus service, you know, the US-1 corridor, again, we're talking about municipalities. But we do have areas where we have overlapping bus routes, where we have proximity to a lot of different uses that, that could potentially support higher-density development. So, you know, we've, we've been as staff, and this has been done over the years as well, but developing an approach to, to do a GIS assessment and identify those priority areas where this, what we've nicknamed the variable flu, could potentially be in addition to the comprehensive plan. So this would allow, you know, you could pick a higher-density cap, we did mention in the URA, our Urban Infill Urban Center doesn't have a cap, but that's based on height limitations and form. But this, this new fluid out of basis for density increases by adding an objectives and policies in the comp plan. We could, you know, this flu could be eligible based on policy criteria, or we could further restrict it to very limited areas of the county, do that GIS assessment and say, all right, there's these few major arterials and nodes where, you know, we feel it's most appropriate, and then developer could only ask for this flu in those defined areas of the urban suburban tier. And again, adding in those enhanced compatibility policies, because as we go with higher densities, that becomes more of a critical component. I also just wanted to have one slide to, to recognize that there are also areas where, you know, you'll see some of our staff reports where we, as staff, recommend denial, where we do have areas even within the urban suburban tier that are more rural and agricultural in nature. We do have a mechanism for the rural enclave overlays, but potentially evaluate enhancing policy language in the comp plan regarding those areas as well. I'm going to jump to the last slide and then back to the second to last slide. Just to, to reiterate, and Commissioner Bernard, before he left, you know, with regard to the workforce housing program, we know that these topics involve a lot of coordination with industry, with other, other county departments, but we wanted to use today to kind of lay these things out, get that initial check-in with the board. But there will be a lot of, you know, steps going forward and, you know, additional, additional meetings. But I guess here I can, you know, leave it up to the board if there were, you know, at a higher level, any kind of direction, the idea of a variable flu and evaluating allowing those higher densities, if that's, that's something that the board has support, or any of the other concepts that we, that we talked about today. So we kind of have our next steps.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. And while I know you're looking for board direction, this is a really large amount of information that we all need to process.
Yes.
And our board direction, and I might be speaking for the rest of the board, I don't know, is that we need to continue the conversation. And again, reiterate what Mac said, and actually was in my notes, too, was, this is a good first step. There is a lot of information here. I mean, when you talk about compatibility, I think of DRIs in the area, like, like Alton, where we have big box stores next to restaurants, next to apartments, and then as you work further deeper into the property, you have single-family homes, you have Carrier Corporation right there, the big, you know, their big headquarters, you're going to have a hospital there. So compatibility is all relative. But this is a, a good starting point. I appreciate everything you all have put together, and I'm sure we all have lots of questions, and I know we have another, we have two more things on our agenda, so maybe next time we give more than an hour for each presentation. This was like, whoa. And I, I do see this as, you know, one, maybe the next step are sitting together, having a roundtable with, with interested parties, whether it's the Realtors, the economic, you know, the Economic Council, the Business Development Board, Housing Leadership Council, managers, building managers, so that they know when we're, when we're going to put in process something where they're going to have to be a little bit more responsive, they know it's coming. So a great first step, but it is just a first step.
Yeah, I do just want to recognize, we knew we were throwing, throwing out a lot of content and, and, you know, knew this was kind of the beginning point, but, and didn't expect like specific direction on do this, do that, but...
And this really, when we talk about workforce housing topics, this will help us lay the groundwork for what is going to be included in the bond, but we are, we're nowhere near that right now, because there's a lot of more, a lot more questions. Thank you.
Administrator Baker, you're recognized.
I can hold off until the rest of the board is done. I just wanted to reiterate our, our normal process and why we came to you today. The board directed us to bring this issue back, and so we, we put everything in here, knowing that we would need to go back and talk to industry, as well as others impacted by it, and have some public input as well. And definitely come back to with more information for more direction, so that when we go to allocate proceeds from the bonds, we're not in contradictory mode. We are looking to move something forward that benefits all of us, including industry, including the individuals that voted for the bond, and make sure that we're, we're helping our community by providing more affordable workforce housing. We cannot do that if we don't include industry, because we need to make sure whatever we create will be useful, a useful tool for them as well. But it needs to benefit everyone in the community.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
I agree. We definitely need to get the stakeholders here, the, the developers and our partners. We also need to, I've been reading that 93-page Senate Bill 120, and that will change a lot of how we handle the situation going forward. It seems like it's getting some traction in Tallahassee. But in the meantime, let's bring our stakeholders together, our, our public-private partnerships, but let's not forget that we have a, a new, may have a new law that, that will be statewide, that will be our, our guide in, first of all, in, in funding and in location and in numbers. So we need to be probably ready for that. So possibly, Ms. Baker, and I'm looking at all of you, before the end of legislative session, maybe we could have that next meeting so that we have our, our framework in, in mind and our stakeholders, our industry partners, so that whatever happens out of Tallahassee, we're ready to go, you know, with our boots on the ground. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you. First off, I have to apologize to Mr. Rutter. I'm sure people love to have you at their parties. Well, I'd love to have you at my parties, so. So I didn't mean to, I was just looking for a little levity, and I did it at your expense, so I do apologize for that, so. Oh, God. That's so nice. I think one of the, one of the recommendations, or we didn't talk about, but, I mean, you talked about it, but maybe as we're moving forward, is looking at what other jurisdictions are doing in terms of enforcing their workforce housing, especially on the rental market, you know, where it changes so quickly, of how they're doing that. And I would think maybe NACO would, might be a good resource for, to find out. I don't know if anybody's on any of those committees that might be able to come back from some of their partners. That would be one thing. I like the direction that you, you all are headed. I like the, in terms of, on the density, and I think the GIS survey of the appropriate, it's something I've been asking for, advocating for, for a while, and, and think that's also, I think it's definitely, I mean, timing is, is very good for that. Going back and working with our partners in the industry, as you've heard from my colleagues, and this is a good, I think this has been a good first step. I think there's a lot of good information you all brought forward this, this afternoon. And so, really appreciate it, but as we know, these are complex issues and lots of different moving parts and all that's happening, so we'll have to try and move every, juggle everything together. But I think we're moving in the right direction and appreciate you, the work you all did. I know we have some cards.
We do.
It is now 3:15. How many cards do we have?
All right, we, we only have four or five.
Okay.
Michelle Jacobs, Jack Weir, Andrea Flores, Jim Knight, Jonathan, I can't read your last name.
Vilma.
Vilma?
Vilma, or would that be Vilma?
Okay, Jonathan Vilma. And then I have a non-speaking card for Brett Jelsimino. As a, as a developer for rent workforce housing, I face a number of challenging forces which make project feasibility more and more difficult. Taxes, interest rates, insurance, and construction costs threaten the ability to deliver workforce housing units at an economical basis when considering other options to employ to facilitate workforce development. Please consider waiving impact and building permit fees for workforce housing projects. There you go. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This has been a long evening. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and County Minister, your neighbor, Michelle Jacobs.
President and CEO for the Economic Council. I prepared some notes prior to coming here because I had seen the deck that was prepared in advance, and Mrs. Baker and I spoke briefly on the phone prior to this, but you all got to the conclusion that we were hoping for, so I want to say thank you. We are here to facilitate those conversations. We feel like there is a lot of opportunity to improve upon the programs that already exist, knowing that we also have a housing bond that's coming forth, and we want to get that money on the ground as soon as possible. But to Vice Mayor's comments about the Senate bill that's moving very quickly, and it's very, it's got a lot of meat on the bone, 93 pages, as you said, Patrick, we need to also kind of just watch that and see how it's going to locally impact us before we make any changes so that we can be in compliance with those. So I just wanted to let you know that we are here to support you, and I wanted to thank you for today. It was a long day, but we appreciate it.
Hi, good afternoon. Jack Weir, Chairman of the Housing Leadership Council. Wanted to compliment the planning staff on a very in-depth presentation. It's a capable and thoughtful group. It is also hard to top a Bachman-Turner Overdrive reference, so.
We're old enough to know who that is.
Yes, that's true. So, one of the things I would urge you, you do have a bit of a structural issue from a compliance standpoint, in that you've got one group that's putting out money, and they seem to have the compliance monitoring down. The other, planning on the workforce housing program, because they're not a lender per se, and it's housed in a different department. What I would suggest as we go forward with the dialogue is that the planning staff looked for a housing finance for guidance in terms of how to handle compliance. One of the things they do is they outsource part of that to third parties, and they make the developer pay, but they, they let that, let the developer know upfront, so that can be factored into the pro forma. As Commissioner Bernard referenced, and Michelle just referenced, we have bond allocation criteria coming up. We expect next week to have in your hands the updated housing plan with input from county staff and others. It provides recommendations from over 100 stakeholders on some of the matters that we discussed today. So it'll be like a very condensed form of public input. And then, of course, Senate Bill 102, which will probably potentially impact how we allocate bond proceeds if they step up the amount of affordable housing funding that they do there as well. And then, I think your planning staff is exactly right. We're really at a pivot from greenfield, sorry to use that term, Vice Mayor, to redevelopment. A lot of the pressure that you're seeing for land use amendments is basically because the zoning levels have historically been low because of the more suburban, almost semi-rural environment, particularly as you go west in unincorporated parts of the county. So look forward to the dialogue, and thank you very much.
Okay, Andrea Flores and Jim Knight.
Jim's gone.
Jim, I think, left. You're good? Okay. Jonathan Vilma.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Vilma. I'm a native of South Florida. And please stop me if it's already been referenced earlier today. I'm referencing State Legislature HB, Legislation HB 1339, and that refers to what has been passed down by the state that's allowing for counties to use at their discretion the ability to increase density without going through any specific, let's call it a two-hour presentation regarding what needs to be done on the zoning, as long as it has an affordable component. And I would urge that all the Commissioners, please consider this, because we are talking about a real housing need. Specifically, you're talking about not being able to employ public school officials, public school employees because of the housing crisis. And if you're able to use this ability to increase the affordability, or excuse me, increase the density based on the affordability of a place or a project, and you can use that at your discretion without having to go through a flu, without having to go through a whole proposed change to the whip or anything else, I would really, really implore and encourage you to think about that and to do so. I'm just putting it on the, on the radar, on the docket, because it is something that can be used at your discretion, which makes it better for you, because you don't have to do it every time. As long as there's a real affordable component, I, I would strongly suggest that in the interim. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
That's it. All right. Thank you very much, and, yeah, as we were transitioning, let's go ahead, we'll take... Thank you very much. And, yeah, as we're transitioning, let's go ahead. We'll take a five-minute break. It's 3:00. We'll call 3:22. Let's be back at 3:27. A little recess there, and let's get started. And we can talk on water issues.
It's that time of day.
Everybody want sugar?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. You're recognized, Mr. Rutter.
Mayor, good afternoon. We'll get, get it rolling. Want to provide the board an update on a variety of water environmental issues. With us, Paul Litten, our Water Resource Manager, and Deb Drum, our ERM Director. And I think Paul is going to lead it off.
Okay. Just want to start with that this is, there's no action on this. We're here to start a long dialogue and, and give you information on water. And we look forward to that continuing discussion.
I'm going to get us kicked off with the first couple of slides and then Paul take over on some of the more technical parts of the water presentation. But to quickly refresh and provide a little bit of a basis and context for the presentation today, you may recall that up in November 22nd, 2022 BCC workshop, we presented our cross-departmental teams, or also known as CDTs. Two of those teams have a significant intersect on water issues, both the environmental protection and the infrastructure CDTs. Our environmental protection focus is pretty simple. It's summarized to complete projects in the watershed that will help support a long-term supply of clean water for all users, including both environmental and agricultural needs. These efforts include environmental restoration, drinking water protection, flood mitigation, and stormwater management and compliance. And additionally, as I mentioned, there's an intersect with our infrastructure cross-departmental team. And in that team, we consider increasing sustainability, we plan and design for extreme rain events, and we provide infrastructure that is strong and exceptional in creating safe, healthy, and pleasing neighborhoods and communities. I wanted to just highlight for you this chart. It shows 12 county departments of your staff that are working actively on water issues. There are various roles listed on this slide, but what I really wanted to do is just highlight the exceptional collaboration that occurs countywide amongst your staff to support environment and water issues. And I wanted to also illustrate the extensive network of water focus groups in our community. You have a lot of representatives in the room today, and I know many are watching online to be tuned in to the important discussion surrounding water and environment. Each of these bubbles on this slide show a group that regularly meets to prioritize water topics in this county. Many towards the top of the slide focus on ecosystem restoration and water management initiatives. And for example, you, the board, have an advisory group called the Palm Beach County Water Resources Task Force that hears water issues and advises on those issues. And the bottom portion of the slide shows those groups focused on drinking water and other water utility initiatives. Ali Bayet is here, our Water Utilities Director, is in the room today. And he and his staff also have an extensive network of meeting groups about utilities and long-term water supply. And we just wanted you to be aware that of all those 12 departments, you have many staff engaged in the community with stakeholders in this way.
All right. I'd like to speak a little bit about the Water Resource Task Force. It's a diverse group of representatives from, everything from the drainage districts to the cities, and it provides a mechanism to both provide information and to act as a catalyst for projects. And this is just a description. Chip Block is the chairman, and I think he'll be speaking later to some details. The next slide.
And I'll just mention, when we talk about water resources management, our goal today was to start real high level, give a really broad brush review about water resources in the county, and just make sure that we're all sort of refreshed on the, the level playing field of understanding. And water resources management is what happens at the confluence of the four, what we call the four legs of the table, is what you see on those bubbles there. And those four legs of the table include water supply, which is having enough water at the right time for your needs, water quality, which is ensuring that the water you need is clean and of unacceptable quality for your needs, flood protection and mitigation is recognizing that South Florida is in general a flood-prone region with low topography and very little topographic variance. And that, that geography requires special measures to ensure that our developed environment is protected to the greatest extent possible from floodwaters. And four, ecosystem restoration, which was in the timeline of Florida development, recognized later in that timeline as an essential complement to life in South Florida because it supports all of the previous water focus needs. You can't have any of the four of these items without the other. They are, they have a lot of strong interactions and we wanted to just start the presentation with that understanding. Some examples of ecosystem restoration efforts that are current and ongoing include the Loxahatchee River Watershed Restoration Project, Palmer Land Acquisition, submerged lands acquisition, which you heard in the delegation meeting brought up as a topic, and 32,000 acres of natural areas, which you spoke of earlier today in the TDR discussion. So we would just wanted to highlight those and make sure that we just underscored those activities. And in the area of water quality, Palm Beach County has water quality mandates that we need to fulfill. And those include things like pollutant reductions under state and federal water quality programs, such as the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES program. We do hold a permit also for a municipal separate storm sewer system, or MS4, for which we must comply with a permit. And we also have a well field protection regulatory program to protect drinking water, which is administered within your ERM department.
Okay, I'll take over from here. So I'll start with water supply. The Palm Beach County has an excellent water utility and wastewater utility. They have permits right now for exempted use that go out for the eastern part, out to 2042. It's a long-term permit and provides an insurance that we will have water available. The western area has permits that will be coming up relatively soon. Lake O'Chobie is our, one of our backup sources of water. Ali gave an excellent presentation at the Water Resource Task Force. And one little factoid was, for all the pipes the utility deals with, if you put them end to end, they'd stretch from here to Alaska. So it's quite a substantial system there. So we'll move on. I'm going to move on to Palm Beach County's rainfall characteristics. As you all are probably personally aware, our rainfall varies seasonally and yearly. Rainfall must exceed the vapor transpiration or for it to accumulate. We get an average of about 60 inches a year, of which the majority, a good portion, like 75%, comes during the wet season. There is considerable monthly and yearly variation. Annual rainfall can vary from 33 inches to 82 inches. And then we have droughts about every, one in 10 years. That's not guaranteed. You can have one every five years, but generally the average about one in 10. During drought, there could be almost no rainfall for six months. Get really crispy. And just to get in perspective, the drainage basin rates for our area are about three-quarters of an inch to an inch and a half a day. So you get past that, water starts accumulating. And the lowest basin is, in the area, is the Indian Trail Improvement District, and they have about 0.6 inches per day of on-peak demand. There's an off-peak demand that lets them get up to about an inch. All right.
You want to do the slide?
Sure. Thank you. This slide just shows you the average monthly rainfall rate and the average ET rate. And you can clearly see the wet season here. Note, though, that some of these months will vary considerably. You can get a wet season month with 20 inches and you can get months with almost, with zero rainfall. Next slide. Okay. This slide shows you how wet one day can get. So the figure on the left is the second day of Ian. So the rainfall had moved to, to north, and you can see it's up there in the 12 to 15-inch range. Bad day. And as I said, those drainage basins can only do about an inch a day, so it takes you a long time to recover from that. And the first day looked pretty much as wet as that. The other slide is the maximum day in the last 20 years. And you can see there's no place to hide. You'll get six inches to 12 inches of rain, no matter where you are, in the 20-year period. And you hear them talk about 100-year return period. If you had 100 years of data, that would get darker and more uniform. Okay. I'm going to talk about how the, the rainfall runoff moves. It starts in the, in our developments, the neighborhoods, and that's often referred to as a tertiary system. You've got your, your inlets or your small canals. It collects and then it discharges into the secondary local system, which is a 298 or a city system. And then that flows into the primary major drainage canals. For us, in Palm Beach County, that is the South Florida Water Management District. And you can see those signs. They have a C or a G on the alligator on them. There are areas that drain directly from the neighborhood into the ocean or neighborhood into, into the district, but generally it follows that pattern. And this is a map of the major basins of the district. And there's really two sides here. On the east side is the, all the basins are drained by gravity into the, into the intercoastal or directly into the ocean. Those are the C16, C15, C51, and the Hillsborough. They stretch out all the way over to the Refuge. The Refuge itself is a water storage area, but it's shallow. And so it runs, it runs out of water pretty quickly in a drought. And that's because it has a floor for environmentally to protect the, the wetlands inside the Refuge. On the west side, you have the, on the northwest side, you have the L8 Basin, and that drains Lake O'Chobie by gravity. So if Lake O'Chobie gets really high, gravity and drainage in that area is impacted. The two basins below are the S5A and the S6 Basin. They drain by pumps into, primarily into Conservation Area 1 and Conservation 2 by pumps. And those pumps are that three-quarters of an inch a day. There is a secondary pump that pumps to the north into Lake O'Chobie that are used very, very rarely. And they have, the total combined is that three-quarters of an inch. South is only about two-thirds of that capacity. All right. This is just a map of all those water control districts that do the job of moving that water from those neighborhoods to the big system or to the, to tide. They are called 298s. And I won't go into much more detail than that. We can, if you have any questions about that, there's a long history on those. They're all dedicated as a single function, and they describe their, their function, or actually, they have described functions. They can have more than one, but they have an authorized area and an authorized function or functions. All right. This will be a little bit of a repeat, but going to just touch it over. This is the FEMA issue. And for us, FEMA, we've been involved with FEMA updating the flood insurance rate maps. And that started many, many years ago, but the most recent version started about two years ago. We put an appeal in because we thought the results were not reasonable. There were inconsistencies in terms of the water level going up and down. Water level was not highest near the inlets, when you, was what you would think because the water pushing in from the ocean. And we basically filed an appeal. They came back to us and with a letter, they said, you have 30 days to either take the maps or choose to do a scientific panel. You gave us directions to, to choose a scientific panel. And this is important, I'm actually flipping the slides right here. This is important because those maps dictate the flood insurance rate and who has to buy insurance. An important aspect, this is one that the mayor already brought up, is when we get to the end of this process, we will need to inform people that you don't just have to buy insurance if you're in this flood zone. You can also buy insurance outside the flood zone. And that's a, can be a valuable investment because if you're right at the edge of a flood zone, you may get, you may get flooded if the storm event exceeds what they call the 100-year storm. And we'll need to inform our, our citizens of that. Because sometimes, I've had people say, oh, I don't need flood insurance because I'm not in that zone. Well, you don't need it as in it's required, but you may want it. All right. Okay. And now we're moving kind of to the regional water movement. So this slide shows you pre-drainage, pre-man, water moved from the Kissimmee slowly down the Kissimmee River, hit Lake O'Chobie. Lake O'Chobie had no levees around it, so it would expand out much larger than it is right now during, during the peak of the wet season. And all that water would overflow and most of it would head south. Some of it would head east and west through the Loxahatchee and through a small connection to the east, actually through the Miami River at times. In the middle was, in this, what's called the Central and Southern Project came into place. They said, we need to provide drainage and we're going to create lands for farming. And they basically said, let's move that water to tide or to down. Let's create those storage areas I talked about, the Conservation 1, 2, and 3. And let's store that water. But mainly their purpose was to get, get water off quickly. And then the final slide is the, the goal of SERP, which is to restore more flow south, provide storage to maintain the, the drainage to the east and the water supply, and reduce those discharges to the estuaries. And this is a map. The circles are basically projects that were identified by SERP in Palm Beach County. The SERP right now has an estimated cost of $23 billion, and that's in 2020. It's scheduled to be completed in 2050. In Palm Beach County, there were seven projects identified to implement SERP. And the reason those seven projects were in Palm Beach County, because they, those were directed to, to relieve, or take Palm Beach County off of the Lake O'Chobie, free up water to send south. And those projects interacted to have multiple benefits. So capturing that water as it ran off and storing it reduces discharges to Lake Worth Lagoon and provides water supply. So of those seven projects, only one is moving, currently moving forward. The project that moving, is moving forward was called the L8 Project. It's now been evolved into the Loxahatchee River Watershed Restoration Project. It's a good project. It's focused on the restoration of the, of the watershed up there. The other six projects were more focused on, on capturing storm water in the estuary, and the estuaries and providing water supply. But it's still, it's a very good project. We're looking forward to moving forward. Just for perspective, the, the SERP had a 48,000-acre feet reservoir in the L8 Basin to capture that water coming off Lake O'Chobie in that basin and to hold it. And had also had ASR to, to put underground and store it for long-term, those, those long-term droughts. And together, they work very good because the reservoir can capture big volumes quickly and the ASR can put it, you know, and help put in storage and help bleed down those reservoir recovery storage for the next big storm. This is a map of the Loxahatchee River area. The dotted line is the outline of the project area. It's a very large project area. And it has everything from wetlands to the restoration, sheet flow, increased flow to the Northwest Fork. The project really was driven by, with all the reduced, reduction in drainage and increased drainage, reduction in storage. The Northwest Fork has increased salinities. It is right now bumping into its minimum flow and level regularly. And so this project will not only provide protection against those harmful flows, but it'll provide restoration flows that'll bring it back to more desired conditions. And just the, it'll improve the, the timing, distribution, and quality of the water, too. This is the, a map of their components. The most one I want to point out is the C8, the one in purple, the C18 empowerment. That's their, their little storage area. It's about 4,000 acre feet. It's good way, a good volume to capture that water coming from the environmental areas like corporate and holding it for the, for the dry season. There are also components that'll connect that basin to the L8 Basin, because the, the C18 basin will not be enough to provide water during the drier years. So you need to be able to tap into the regional system. What is missing from this was the SERP component with that big storage to have water available during the drought to, to move up to the, to basin. It also doesn't have any water treatment for moving water from the L8 to the C18. And so, there were some local initiatives that were identified. The new plan took care of a few of those. There's still that issue of storage in the There's still that issue of storage in the L-8 basin, a connection to the L-8 basin. The plan, the SERP plan does call for connection, but the plan timeframe is pretty far out. And there's probably some local initiatives that could make that happen sooner and would be desirable, too. There's also, like I said, the water quality component. Most of the time, the L-8 water basin, L-8 water is very good, but there'll be times when Lake Okeechobee's discharging that it would be nice to have a mechanism to clean it and not have to stop flows because of water quality. Moving on to Lake Okeechobee. So this is a little more complicated, but think of Lake Okeechobee as a big storage pool. And when you're up in the top, you're about, you have concerns with the levee, and you've got to get rid of water. That's called a zone A. That is a zone of maximum releases. At that point, the Corps is only concerned about levee integrity, and they are going to discharge. And the Zone B C is the transition zone, and they use that to either ramp up or ramp down flows. You can move through that zone pretty quickly. Zone D is the one you spend most of the time in. Inside of Zone D is the zone, the schedule that is helpful for the lake. It's the latatorial zone, it's a target zone for the latatorial zone. Now, remember, we talked about how the lake used to expand out and contract. Well, now it's confined by levees. So when it gets high, the depths around the edges gets deeper and it basically inhibits the growth of the grasses, and the wave action picks up. You get more turbidity. It's kind of a cascading effect. This schedule here with the highlighted zone is what is desirable for the lake to keep that grass and the latatorial zones healthy. Once you get below that Zone D, you're into the water shortage zone, and that's where the district will start imposing potential water cutbacks depending upon the forecast. And just to kind of back it up, we are in good shape with the Palm Beach County utility because we have a lot of reuse. So we're in a much stronger position than a lot of utilities should we get those cutbacks. We probably won't be imposed as early as other areas. Okay. Next one is the schedule. So I'm not going to read every one of this, but the Corps has out on the street a draft for approval of the new Lake Okeechobee schedule. And they are moving forward to making that active. One of the requirements was that they completed the Herbert Hoover Dyke, which they just did the river cutting on. The concerns that we have is that schedule kind of cashes checks on our water supply for, to increase water supply to the Everglades right now. So unlike our expectation was when they finished this repair, they would return our water supply to 100% of what it was before. We got it back about 30% of what we lost. And now they are going to move forward with that. And so we will be at risk of more frequent droughts and water cutbacks. They are going to make efforts in terms of their operational flexibility to accommodate for that, but that will be a challenge. The other concerns are the lake is being run higher, and that latatorial zone is going to be impacted. And there are also concerns that those higher levels, in combination with a storm, could make drainage in the L-8 basin harder. And the last one is in Zone D, they are calling for Lake Worth Lagoon to receive 300 CFS of flow for months at a time. At the same time, Zone D does not call for any discharges to the St. Lucy Estuary. There are meaningful discharges to Cluj Haci. Then we're done with that slide. So here is a list of projects that we're moving forward with. Most of them are in the planning and setup phase, but we look forward to moving them through. We've got a lot of exciting projects there. And then these are the state funding initiatives, the La Ceta River Preservation Initiative, Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative, and then the C-51 reservoir. The state stepped in, and they are providing Cells 12 and Cells 13, which provide us 6,000, 8,000 acre feet of storage. So that's a good 14,000 total, which is a good third of the way to that 45,000 that we've identified as desirable in the basin. And that was funded by the state legislative. Great step forward. So our next significant milestones, completion of the Corbett levee. Let me take a little bit of time here. Corbett levee is a old levee that was built way back when they separated the Corbett levee from the Indian Trail Improvement District. It was not built to the current standards. No harm, no foul, but they also didn't really understand the topo and the rainfall mounts. So water on the north side can build up quite quickly as it runs downhill against the levee. It was identified as a problem after the storm. The state stepped in, funded two miles of the five-mile section. The remaining three miles never got funded. Is an issue that provides resiliency to do it. Also will provide some more operational flexibility for the Corbett area. Very important project. Looking forward to seeing it move forward. We have applied for a grant last year. We're looking forward to hearing from the state pretty soon on that. Then back to the Cell 12 and 13. We are moving forward with that contract. They'll be coming to a board item for the contract for us to take that as the grantee. There are additional cells planned in the future that would bring the total for the L-8 for storm water up in the 45,000 acre feet range. And then lastly, we're looking with the torque of the district to expedite the C-18 reservoir to get those benefits as early as possible. Thank you for sitting through a Mach 1 presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. That was excellent. And we'll bring it back to the board for questions. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. And we do have some cards, too, on this. Thank you for the presentation. I know we sat, you sort of ran through it, and I realized that, you know, it's been a long day. And there are a lot, there really are a lot of important takeaways on here. But can you tell me a little bit more? I have two little, two pages marked here. When you talk about depth, right, the C-51 reserve, reservoir cells, 6,000 acre feet, how big is the actual cell? I mean, how far down does it go that it holds all the water? I mean, is it 1,000 acres, but it goes down 20 feet or?
It goes down about 25 feet, if I remember correctly. It's not as deep as the one adjacent to it, but it's still a very deep low-ground storage area.
And you sort of went quickly by the potential supportive water projects. Can you give us a little bit more information on those projects? That would have been this pretty page here.
Sure.
This one. There you go. Yeah, potential benefits and potential supportive water projects. Can you just touch a little bit on those?
Sure. There, the, so starting the bottom, the yellow cells are the district's flow equalization basin, which is a fancy name for a surge tank that they use at the front end of their SDAs to help them achieve their water quality. On the west side of that, there are two active projects. Phase one of the C-51 reservoir are the water supply component, and that has already been built and is booked for the Broward County for water supply. North and west of that are the new cells that are being built that are more dedicated to storm water, and those are Cell 12 and 13. And it'll kind of expand north and west as they grow. The concept here, which is an early drawing, was to find a treatment area and a route to move water from the L-8 up north into the Indian Trail Improvement District, then convey it over through their major east-west canal along the Corbett, and then connect and have that water taken up to the C-18 basin. And that would be?
And ultimately to the La Ceta.
And ultimately, yeah. And from the C-18 west, it flows northeast over the Weir, down into the C-10 canal, then up through what's called G-92 to Northwest Fork via the C-14 canal, the South Indian River Water Control District.
I know. A lot of the discussion is always south of the lake. And so this shows us that there's projects, necessary projects, that are east of the lake and north and making their way a little bit north of the lake. So I appreciate that.
Just one more detail. The Corbett Dupreeh has often discharged water for several months after the wet season. And they are, large areas, they discharge, and they have some of the highest, best water quality we have. You know, it's comparable to Everglades. And so it's an opportunity to move good water to an area that would appreciate it.
So you're looking at storage in ITID there? And then where?
Moderate storage in IT, kind of a treatment and storage at the same time. We're looking, if you got more ambitious, would be to have the storage be in those deeper reservoirs that are more efficient. They're not going to pay the price in evaporation as much as a shallow reservoir would.
And then there's a connection, I see MECA written in there. And everything that's in the yellow with the slashes is wishful thinking?
There are areas that a group of local technical experts on water, some of whom are in this room, sort of got together and said, to optimize water management in the county, these are areas where we need to look at connections and storage. It doesn't need to be, it's always a little bit of a risk to put lines on a map because you're saying then you're putting a parcel, right? It doesn't have to be any one of those parcels, but the concept is that you would find a way to move water from this western area and get it up into areas of the county with a multitude of benefits. Water supply as well as environmental water supply for the environment up to the Northwest Fork of the La Ceta River. So that connection is one that's been discussed in this county by people who have been involved in water for decades, and we continue to look at those options.
And it looks like if you've got the L-8 connected to that area, we actually improve water quality into the M Canal through grassy waters.
That is one route, yes.
That is one route, and that is a potential outcome.
Okay. Potential, but not current.
These are, go ahead.
So currently, there is an agreement that you can move water through the grassy waters preserve. They can, you have to lift it from the L-8 with the city's pump, and then it goes into the grassy waters preserve and comes along the east side, which is not even really a canal, it's a ditch. We can only move about 20 CFS that route. And it's just constraints on the water levels and grassy water and that conveyance. So that route can be improved a little bit, but it's not going to ever be as a route with enough capacity for what we need. And as Deb described, the map was put together before the Corps came up with their plan. So right now, the Corps is really taking care of that C-18 reservoir and north. They're taking care of.
Get on the map.
Okay, I don't want to fry my boss here. So this, they're going to take care of the pump that lifts water over to the reservoir and all the features with that. So we have a good portion of that done, or will be done for us.
I think it's so important. Point out that what you see on there is, on MECA, is now called the C-18. That South Florida Water Management is actually in process of moving forward with.
That's where our good range is. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Okay. Let's see, we'll go to Commissioner Baxter.
I just wanted to say thank you for an amazing presentation and to let everyone know I do have prior commitments, so I'll be leaving here shortly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have questions, two questions, really. So there's a lot of people in the county that still are on well water. Do we know how many there are? And do we have, how deep their wells are? And then?
I think the district would be the holder of that because it goes, they, private wells go through a permitting process, I believe, with the Health Department, and then that information goes to the district. But I'd have to chase that down for you to give you.
I guess, so just getting to the end of the question is really, so to understand how many people are on private wells, how deep their wells are, and then, you know, in a drought condition, when would they start to lose capacity? You know, do we, is there, is there the ability to correlate it? How dry we get? At what time, at what point different well elevations would start to lose the ability to produce or to allow for the uptake of water in them? And then ultimately, what, I guess at the end of the question, it would be, and then is understanding how, what that, you know, what that possibility would be? And then is there a mitigation plan for that?
Yeah, let me look into that. I mean, the wells are pretty deep, but we need to, we'll make sure we're not just guessing at that. The thing that we usually run into is for Indian Trail, the firewater level. The canals need to maintain above a certain level for fire protection so they can tap into them to respond to a fire. That usually happens much more frequently than a well complaint. There are, there has been some well complaints during droughts around, along the L-8 canal, but not too many.
I mean, not to, not to put them to the same level, because I had, I had a property here in town, and I had a well on it for irrigation. And I want to say that well probably was maybe 60 or 60 feet deep. And so I've just, so that made me think about that. And then on one of your, on your slide, when you showed the traditional flow from Lake Okeechobee, and you said it would just spill over. So when they would get intense rainfalls in the past, would that, would the Everglades then flood? I mean, I know a couple of years ago, we had a situation, we had a lot of rain, and the SDAs were getting flooded, and the water control areas were also, you know, getting to levels that people were not, they were concerned about. So in the past, before our intervention, was that normal for the Everglades to flood?
It would rise, but because it could expand so much wider compared to the narrow pathway it's given right now, the depth just didn't get as much. And then it had more width, more flow area, it could move more water. So the combination of the two, it would not get as deep as it does right now with all those obstructions in the way.
But you would have higher water levels, and that's why it's so interesting in the Everglades. You have the Tree Islands, right? That's where all the wildlife would congregate during those high water times. And then when a drought would come, you would see that, we still see it today, that like baked, caked earth that's all cracked, that would happen, too, in the Everglades. So you would just have normal climatic changes that would occur. They still occur today. It's just more difficult for us because we have so many people in the footprint of South Florida that you're having to manage those floodwaters or the drought with people needs at the same time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to commend Ali Bayat, who's here and the head of our water. I had well water for over 35 years. And what I learned, Mayor Weiss, is that there are two aquifers that run under Palm Beach County, certainly under the Ag Reserve. And the upper-level aquifer is where most wells take their water from. The lower aquifer is much fresher water, but it costs a lot more to pump a well down into that area, to the lower aquifer. I always thought I had the best water around, mostly because it was free. But then I learned that our county is a number, we have number one water in the state of Florida. So I made the big conversion, thanks to Mr. Bayat and all the team over at the water, our water supply system here. So I want to thank you and commend you for your services and to know that you've got one convert right here from well to county water, number one water in the state. Thank you.
Yes, I completely agree. Ali gave a great presentation about the utility at our Water Resource Task Force meeting. So great presentation. You can pull it up online or ask him to give it to you.
Thank you. All right. Any?
All righty.
We have some speakers now.
We have some cards. Vice Mayor, and you guys can take both podiums, you know this, you know the drill.
But can I just take a point of personal privilege? And recognize former Commissioner Jeff Coons, who is with us, Mr. Water back there.
He's coming up. Vice Mayor Chip Block, Jeff Coons, Mary McNicholas, Tommy Stroud, Ernie Cox. Thank you for waiting.
Chip Block, Vice Mayor of Jupiter Inn Light Colony and Chairman of your Water Resources Task. Force, which I'm fortunate enough to have Mayor Weiss on.
Did you say unfortunate enough?
Yes, I ended.
I won't take up too much of your time, because Jeff's here and he'll want the rest of my time. I look forward to meeting the new commissioners, elected and appointed, and am happy at any point to be available to discuss water issues with you. I'm not an expert on water. I was in the media business in New York until I retired, and I've learned a lot over the last 12 years being on the task force, thanks to Jeff and Aubrey Arrington, and Paul and Jeremy McBrien, and of course Deb. I have to say that a lot of what we have to deal with is remedial, in terms of water quality and water supply, because a lot of mistakes have been made in the past. So something like what we're trying to do to protect the Lake Worth Lagoon and the Loxahatchee River are remedial in nature. The other thing I would say when we talk about, what Paul was talking about, water from Lake O, and our getting our share of water from Lake O, we want the water from Lake O, but we don't want the water from Lake O at certain times when it's terribly polluted with algae and other pollutants. The Corbett, I will speak of directly, because I think it needs to be an extremely high priority. I know it is for you, it needs to continue to be. We need Todd and his group to press for that grant to complete the Corbett Levy and to work with the Water District. We're fortunate now that we have a good water district, thanks to my friend Congressman Mass and the Governor. We have really excellent people there, including Drew Bartlett. So we have a partner in this, as opposed to what we had before. So I urge you to focus on water. It's part of the basis of our economy. It's not a nice-to-have, we all know the basics of water, what we need from water, but it's also something that is precious in terms of maintaining not just the tourist economy, but the agriculture economy, and all the small businesses, the fishing guides and the hotels and so on, that were in fact decimated in the Treasure Coast with the blue-green algae problem. So we need to focus on water quality and water supply. Those are my two issues, the protecting the inland waterways, including the Loxahatchee and the Lake Worth Lagoon. Oops, sorry, Jeff. Thank you all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Anyway, I'm Jeff Coons. I was a county commissioner for eight years. I was a city commissioner in West Palm Beach for 12 years. So I became a city commissioner in 1989, and they sat down and they go, "So Flagler dug a ditch, and the water from West Palm Beach comes from Flagler's ditch, and Flagler's ditch water comes from Lake Okeechobee, and Lake Okeechobee comes from the Kissimmee Rivers, which the headwaters, the Kissimmee River, the parking lots at Disney World." So basically, you're drinking water from the parking lots at Disney World. And the city of West Palm Beach has a unique grassy waters, please go see this. It's a unique system that's a recharge for all of Palm Beach County, and that water goes and recharges the Loxahatchee River. The Loxahatchee River is a wild scenic river from 1985. The Everglades Act in 2000 basically prioritized eight projects in Palm Beach County. Now, one got finished and one is halfway through, okay? We have been totally screwed by the Army Corps and the Water Management District for what we need in Palm Beach County. They do not understand, we have grassy waters, we have 23,000 acres of publicly owned land that we bought, we've invested a billion dollars in restoring that land, and we can't get good water. We're in a drought. The only reason we're not in drought restrictions right now is the hurricane dropped 18 inches of water, and it came down the river and sitting in the lake. We're short three inches of water right now because we're in La Niña, okay? And the Everglades, and the, and the Lake Worth Lagoon was a priority for the Army Corps, it fell off, and thank the Commissioner Weiss, it's back on again. Water's a crisis, and the area that you cover, Commissioner Barnett, in the, in the URA, the Urban redevelopment area, the, one of the, one of the things we looked at a long time ago is a stormwater utility to be able to treat the water. I think we've missed some funding sources that we should use to solve our own water issues. We tried the stormwater utility 20 years ago. Honestly, the commissioners wanted to do it, staff didn't want to do it, to be honest with you, and that's where it went. And I think you need a workshop with the Army Corps and the Water Management District and said, "So here's the history of the Everglades restoration, here's what you promised, and here's where we are now, what are you going to do to fix it here?" Because we're not getting the right kind of water we want. Palm Beach County Water Utilities is sitting on the Biscayne Aquifer with great wellfields. There's no problem with your utilities, but the low-some schedule is, is not good, and you'll have people tell you this, we, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna run into serious droughts, which means the conservation area is going to be low, which means Lake Worth Drainage District is going to be low, which means it affects farming in the Lake Worth Drainage District, and it affects the water table in Boca Raton. Literally, every place in Palm Beach County gets affected where we're not taking a look at the systematic water strategies. I would go to the Army Corps and the Water Management District and say, "We want a basin fee to fix our own problems." Paul Linton can tell you how to replumb this county. We need to rethink and replumb the county. What they did when they ditched and diaked it 80 years ago is not going to work for what we need to do to get the water resources we really need to do. So it's a part, you guys are set with your utilities, but the rest of the ecosystem needs some support. Thank you very much. I hope you guys have fun being commissioners. Thank you.
Administrator Baker, you recognize.
Just a little clarification point. We always do what our board directs us to do. The stormwater issue was a challenge because we've got pockets, as you well know, in the unincorporated area, and then it runs into cities, and because we don't control cities, it was very difficult to put stormwater through our URA area, and that's what you're referring to. So it wasn't so much that staff didn't want to do it, it was almost impossible to do because the city and unincorporated areas intermingled there, so.
I think the deal is, every city has a stormwater utility, okay? And the county areas to the, to the west are the advantageous. Right now, the Palm Beach County Water, the regulatory system says, "Keep the water on site." A stormwater utility may be able to allow you to do regional stormwater facilities that could capture the water and reuse it. Just think outside the box.
Thank you.
Mary?
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. I know it's been a long day. I'm Mary McNicholas with Jeffrey V. Sluggitt and Associates, and representing Indian Trail Improvement District, otherwise known as ITID. First of all, I'd like to say what we're doing right, and, and I know there's been 20 years and 30 years, I, I am friends with these really great people. I just know that what we're doing right, right now, is we are working very strongly with the Water Resource Task Force, with Palm Beach County staff that's here, with your legislative group, with your administrators, also strongly with the South Florida Water Management District. Drew Bartlett and his staff, Carolina Moran and Dave Colangelo, I cannot say enough good things about. Deb, you know, and with the addition of Paul Linton here, everybody that's been here trying to do water and good water for 20 years is thrilled. I have only been on the scene in about a year and a half as far as the Corbett Levy goes, and that's what I'd really like to discuss. We need to get this to the finish line. The, I know that your legislative staff is doing an amazing job, your consultants are doing an amazing job, we just absolutely need to get this to the finish line. And the reason is, is that back in, you know, when we talk about inches of water on your maps and everything, which those are amazing, but back in 2012, we had between 17 and 19 inches drop in a 48-hour time period. That flooded and made very vulnerable over 45,000 residents. That's not just the acreage, that also included Royal Palm Beach, Loxahatchee Groves, parts of Wellington, but as far as ITID has gone, they've worked on this levy for a decade. They were promised to get the second half of it built, they had $4 million done, the half that's on the west side was built, the half that is on the east side was never completed, even though promised. Half a levy is no levy at all. That's for you newcomers and commissioners. Honestly, as far as this goes, leaving those people still vulnerable, if we had, I mean, we were very close in the last storm, and I think your staff could tell you how vulnerable this would be. ITID has worked, and we will continue to work with Palm Beach County. I know there were a couple of things that were mentioned as far as engineering things and stuff before. We thank you for helping us on the M2 bypass, you are administering that for us. We included the MO downfall. I'm sure Jay Foye is sad that he's not here, Paul, to talk to you about all the specific details and engineering designs to move water in different ways, but we are a cooperative partner. I'm asking, please, to use all your resources possible. Commissioner Baxter, who had to leave, is absolutely committed to this, so was her predecessor, and we appreciate you continuing to do so right now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Tommy Stroud, I'm the Executive Director of Lake Worth Drainage District, and appreciate the presentation. Your staff did a great job putting this together, and you've got an excellent group to rely on to help get through some of the challenges. Got a lot of challenges. Lake Worth Drainage District covers about 200 square miles. We have about half of the county's population that live within our boundaries. Our job is to, one, provide drainage during flood, flood times, but when it's dry, we also pump water from the regional system. As Paul described, our primary source is the Refuge Water Conservation Area 1, which is an environmental ecological resource. Its backup water supply is Lake Okeechobee. So things that happen in Lake Okeechobee and Lake Okeechobee's water supply have a domino effect in southeastern Palm Beach County. One of our concerns about the new schedule is when the Corps did all the computer modeling and assessment of how this might perform, what, in trying to accomplish all of the things that the Corps has to try to do, one of the larger ones being reducing the damage and discharges to the estuaries, St. Lucie and Kalusahatchee, and to send that water south where it could do benefit to the Everglades, what they did unintentionally was bypass Palm Beach County, bypass Water Conservation Area 1. When you look at the canals that you rely on to send water south into the Conservation Area 3 and into Everglades National Park, it doesn't come through the eastern reach. And so when you look at their modeling during severe droughts, eastern Palm Beach County was significantly drier. The water that passed by us had a benefit in Broward and Miami Dade, where you saw they were significantly wetter. And so we made comments to the Corps of Engineers, we hope that we can work out a solution longer term. There are other challenges, of course, climate change, et cetera, but when SERP is implemented, more water will come from the lake down to the Everglades, which means we'll need to find another source. There were some projects identified, some of those seven that Paul mentioned, were identified to offset or mitigate the water that we would lose from Lake Okeechobee in the conservation area, but those are either, we're not certain if they're going to get built, or they're so far out, it, it may not provide us any, any real benefit in the near term. So with that, we appreciate your consideration, we're here to help you and your staff any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie Cox. Hi, Ernie, how are you?
Good evening, or good afternoon. Thank you.
Feels like evening.
Good, good to be back with everybody. For those I've not met, my name's Ernie Cox, and I'm a consultant with a company called Family Lands, remember, it's just a small company based in Jupiter, but I grew up on the Loxahatchee River, and grew up boating and fishing and swimming in the Lake Worth Lagoon, and one of the things we've talked about a lot as we work on the restoration of the Loxahatchee River and the restoration of the Lake Worth Lagoon, is to be able to swim and fish and eat the fish that you catch out of the lagoon. And so kind of as, as I make my comments, think about that result, and the lagoon today is healthier than it was based on the work of the county and Erm and Deb and her predecessors, and now Paul, but very important for us to continue this job. The other thing is, as a private consultant, I'm the project manager for the C-51 reservoir project, so I thought, since some questions came up, I'd, I'd come up and make a few brief comments. First, if anybody would like to come visit, now is a really good time, because we are 80% complete with the construction of Phase 1, and it's a very unique geologic formation in that you can dig a hole and de-water it, whereas most of Florida's like Swiss cheese. And so right now, it's completely empty of water, and it's ultimately going to hold a lot of water. When we finish it, we'll start putting water, and we think in April, May of this year. Paul mentioned it, Phase 2 sells 12, 13. We've been working very collaboratively with the county, the Water Management District, the legislators, the Governor, and really looking forward to getting that project under construction. And when you visit, again, just call me, we'll go out one-on-one, ride around, take about an hour, hour and a half, hard hats, vests, full construction, but to see how working together, we can start to replace some of the storage that unfortunately just didn't end up in the final Locks River Plan. But what I'm, what I'm encouraged about, and I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to end on a very high note, is right now, we have good policy, we have great leadership at the staff, the commission level, our local delegation, and everybody's very interested in solving these environmental water projects. We also have very good funding, both at the state and federal levels. So in this window of opportunity, because unfortunately, these things don't last forever, in this current window, we could get a lot done, and, and what I really like, I'll echo Chip Block's comments, there's a lot of people that are connected and working together, and today, everybody's getting along. Unfortunately, we've lived through times when we're not. I hope it continues, but right now, everybody's getting along, let's get as much done as we can. So thank you, and really excited to just be part of it. Appreciate it.
Ernie, if it's okay, I'll share your cell phone number with the rest of the Commission.
Feel free.
Thank you.
Right, is that, is that it?
That's it for Kirk.
Okay. Well, I don't see any other lights lit. I appreciate your time this afternoon and sharing all this wonderful, great information with us, and look forward to our continuing dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're talking about buying stuff next.
That sounds exciting. Yes.
That's who asked.
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of County Commissioners, County Administrator Baker. We're here to talk about purchasing. Ms. Baker asked us several weeks back if we could start to prepare a presentation to go before the Board. So with me, I have the newly appointed, four months in, Director of Purchasing, Melody Thelwell, also Stacy Garcia-Serrano, Administrative Manager, and Angela Sims, Administrative Project Coordinator. And with that, Melody, begin her presentation.
Thank you, Chief Duran. There it is. Thank you, Chief Duran, and thank you for Mayor Weiss, our Vice Mayor Sacks, Commissioners, and our County Administrator, Ms. Baker, for your time today. Today, we'll be presenting an overview of PBC's purchasing department. And please stop me if I'm going too fast, or if my New York accent comes out a little bit too much. All righty. So during this presentation, you will gain a better understanding of the following topics: our governing policy, which is our purchasing code, the differences between purchasing and procurement, an overview of each department within the purchasing division, purchasing thresholds, cone of silence, and the coming attractions for our purchasing department. Now, as you see on this slide, as a part of the county's ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2, delves into purchasing. We've included the link within our presentation as well. We've also included the Florida statutes, as well as the Reference Guide for State Expenditures. What is government purchasing, or is it procurement? According to NASPO, which is the National Association of State Procurement Officers, public procurement is the legal authority that advises, plans, obtains, and evaluates a government's expenses on goods and services that are used to fulfill any government activities, obligations, and objectives. Procurement is an essential function within state and local governments to help reduce cost and generate savings, and participants in procurement should follow principles such as impartiality, flexibility, and effective use of public funds. as impartiality, flexibility, and effective use of public funds to ensure that they are keeping procurement transparent and fair. It's a mouthful. But one of the things we want to be able to point out to you is that, in PBC purchasing, we are good stewards with the public's funds. One of the next values and guiding principles that we've posted here is from NIGP, which is the National Institute for Governmental Purchasing. It is another premier public procurement organization that has been developing, supporting, and promoting public procurement professions since 1944. As noted on this slide, accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency are the top values of the NIGP, and it's also reflective of our department as well. Now, in our division, we have about five distinct areas. The first one is vendor onboarding and renewals, using our Vendor Self-Cerf System. We currently have about 22,000-plus active vendors with an approximate annual spend of about $315 million each year. The vendor outreach, with our Office of Equal Business Opportunity, we go out on monthly campaigns so that we can increase the vendors that can participate as a part of our solicitations. Solicitation management, which is the pre-award. Last year, we issued 290 bids. Contract management, which is the post-award. After everything has been done for the solicitations, we manage about 800 active contracts last year in fiscal year '22. And then, last but not least, our warehouse services and support. We had issued out over 3,400 stock requisitions last fiscal year totaling about $1.8 million, and that's with about 270,000 items shipped to various county departments. The first one we're going to talk about is vendor onboarding and renewals. Now, first things first, our vendors, when they're looking to work with us, I know it's a very small snippet on your slide, but it's a screenshot of our vendor onboarding system. So what we require very simply is that our vendors visit our website, complete an online application, they attach a current W-9, and they select commodity codes. What are commodity codes? It's a universal taxonomy for identifying commodities and services in procurement systems. We happen to use the NIGP commodity codes, and those are updated frequently in our system. Once selected, our PBC team will review the application for completion. If any of our vendors run into a problem while registering, we do have staff, they're available, to help them in person, online, or over the phone. The next section, as we mentioned, was vendor outreach with our OEBO. Currently, we attend and participate in various vendor outreach events with OEBO, as well as our county departments. Sometimes our departments are large enough, like wood, water utilities, or engineering, that they may have individual vendor workshops, and we'll be right there to help vendors become, potential vendors, become registered vendors with us. So our vendor outreach increases the vendor pool. It enhances cross-departmental collaborations related to contract renewals or new projects. And it also allows for more transparency and levels the playing field for small, medium, or large vendors. Solicitation management. These are pre-award processes. This is a slide here on page 13 that I will ask all of you to kind of highlight, please. Okay. Why? Because this is a quick and dirty cheat sheet that you can use later on. Okay, let's begin. So for our goods and services, up to $4,999. We have a county PPM, which is our Policies and Procedures Manual, CW-L-048, which it is called the Decentralized Purchase Order, okay, process. And what that means is that departments can utilize this DPO in our online system to order and obtain services that are not currently on contract or at our warehouse, okay? This PPM goes in depth as to how they must retain those quotes, what they must look like, that sort of thing, okay? And as you see in the comments and requirements section, the county departments will retain those procurement documents, i.e. the quotes, in compliance with the procurement code. There's no BCC approval. For our goods and services between $5,000 and $99,999, we can issue out what is an RFS, Request for Submittals, or Request for Quotes, which is an RFQ. There is a public posting process. There are bid evaluations between purchasing and the respective departments, not subject to protest proceedings or the cone of silence, and BCC approval may be needed just because of the thresholds, okay? Goods and services greater than $100,000, this is where our competitive solicitations come into play, the invitation of bid, which is the IFB, or the RFP, which is Request for Proposal. Similar to the above, public posting process is here. The bid evaluation may have a selection committee, which may be subject to protest proceedings, as well as the cone of silence. And anytime that you see, like today, we did not have a contract list, any of these competitive solicitations will be presented during that contract list for your review and approval, okay? Very quickly, the flowchart for the RFQ, the RFS, the IFB, or the RFPs. Now, I know there's a lot of acronyms here, so please stop me if you have any questions. All right. The first step is the need identification. The department uses a requisition that comes over to purchasing. We are now meeting on a monthly basis with departments to do more forecasting. So even though we track all of their active bids that are out there, there may be a new project that comes along. This is where we will talk about that and identify it. And then we strategize as to, how long do they need to get this out, you know, all the different steps. The next step comes goal-setting committee. What happens here is that we determine if there are any applicable affirmative procurement initiatives that can be added to the bid. Now, for the goal-setting committee members, it is multi-departmental, and they are there to truly, truly drill down and get into the weeds as to the scope of work. The next is the scope of work development, if there needs to be any tweaks based upon what came from that goal-setting committee. The next is where we now finalize the bid, and we advertise on the county's VSS system and Channel 20 for usually about 30 days. Solicitation management continues now when we have the actual bid submittal, as well as if there is a selection committee that is involved. So as we noted before, purchasing, OEBO, and the department will begin the initial review to determine responsiveness for some of the bids, RFQ, RFS, and IFBs. But for the RFPs, it's much more complicated, and we have a selection committee process that is convened. If there's any additional exceptions, that goes on during that process, that's the negotiation phase, and then we come to the recommendation for award. Here's another page that we will ask you to please highlight. This is page 16, related to the cone of silence. Please note, in the first box you will see, it references the county's ordinance, Section 2335. My fingers were going too fast there. It's actually 2-355. And what does it talk about here? The cone of silence means it's a prohibition on any communication except for written correspondence regarding a particular request for proposal, request for qualification, bid, or any other competitive solicitation between any person or the person's rep seeking an award from such a competitive solicitation, and any county commissioner, commissioner's staff, any member of a local governing board, or the member's staff, a mayor or chief executive officer that is not a member of a local governing body, or the mayor or chief executive officer's staff, or any employee authorized to act on behalf of the commission or local governing body to award a particular contract. It's a mouthful, yes. But right here, on the right-hand column, when does the cone of silence go into effect? It goes into effect immediately as the bids are submitted into our offices. The cone of silence does not terminate until it comes to the board. But can they communicate with you in writing? Yes, they can. Protest proceedings. This may come up, should there be someone that feels that they are aggrieved party. So as we noted here, protest awards is defined as, after posting of a recommended awardee, any bidder or proposer who is aggrieved in connection with the recommended award may protest in writing to the Director of Purchasing, myself. All these notices of protest must be received within five business days of posting the recommended award. Now, after we go and we solicit, we award, all that good stuff, here comes the contract management piece, post-award. And what does that mean? Truly, truly, vendor performance, as well as to ensure that they are in compliance with that bid. So purchasing, as well as the departments work together to ensure that, yes, they are obtaining their goods and services, the vendor submits their payment request, has a properly completed invoice, right, that is over to the clerk's office. The county department monitors the vendor's performance and may recommend contract renewal. As we mentioned before, we had approximately 800 active contracts. We begin that renewal process six months in advance, just in case the vendors, you know, can't comply, or there's something going on there that we may have to rebid. So we would need the time, so we don't have a gap in services. If the vendor does not perform, and we hope that they are able to, there's ways for us to be able to cure those contract deficiencies. Contract termination, suspension, or debarment, and those are extreme, but those happen with cross-departmental participation and agreement, not with just, I'm purchasing alone. Warehouse, services, and support. So here in this building, you may notice that there is a mailroom downstairs. That's some of our folks that deliver and bring about all of the different mail or items that folks are looking for. So as we mentioned before, over 3,400 stock requisitions were issued in fiscal year '22 totaling over $1.8 million, with over 270,000 items shipped to various county departments. Our warehouse provides also county-wide support during times of activation, such as deliveries of needed items for shelter support. Our courier mail services, I mentioned, they're down here, just in case you haven't seen them. And just to mention, they also provide services to our other constitutional officers, such as PBSO, the clerk's office, the state attorney, and the supervisor of election.
We're jumping out of an airplane.
And our coming attractions. As we mentioned before, NASPO happens to be the National Association for the State Procurement Officers. And this is one of the organizations that we're members with as well. And here, after when I first came, we did a SWOT analysis by our Director of Strategic Planning and Performance, Dr. Keith Clinnscale and Marcella Millet. And what they did for us was pretty much pull out as to one of some of the issues and concerns that our current staff were facing. So when we saw that, amazingly, it aligned with many of the things that NASPO has here. So in summary, all of the items are key, but for us, the first tranche of items that we're going to focus on are increased customer service, continuous process improvement, training for our folks, e-procurement, and of course, data analytics. I just thank you all for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Seeing that you manage about over 800 contracts, it seems that your relationship with ISS, it's got to be a very seamless process. How's that in terms of, you know, managing all the contracts and to make sure that you have the right procedures in place to make sure that the contracts need to be renewed? How's that, please?
Sure. Thank you for the question, sir. So with ISS, we have, I mean, I've met with them since I've been here several times. And one of the things that had been in place already before I came is that we receive the reports weekly, correct? Weekly. So what are those, some of those reports? One is called the Master Agreement List by End Date. So ISS, with some of our team members, have helped us to create and write specific reports so that we can fleece out of the system all of the active contracts that are coming up, the days that are left that are supposed to be active, who's the lead department, the number of contracts that are there, all of that that you can imagine. So I love the data. So I'm somewhat of a fiend for it, as my colleagues can tell you. And we will meet with the respective departments and say, wait a minute, this is coming up. Do you know? Or what's happening here? We're only seeing one vendor. Do we need to work with OEBO to try to glean more, you know, local and/or small certified vendors as a part of it? So yes, it's a well-old machine, sir, that's been there before my arrival, and we continue to use it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First, well, first a comment. I noticed in one of your slides, one of the things you're doing is proactively working with the departments, and so congratulations and thank you for that. I think that's very progressive. One of the questions I had, I know the state and other jurisdictions also have contracts and so forth, and are you able to piggyback off of those? And how efficient or effective is that for you all?
Great question, Mayor. Yes, we are. Are there some restrictions? There are, and hence why we will be bringing later, maybe within a couple of months, Chief, the revised purchasing code. Because right now, we are able to piggyback off of whether it be the state of Florida or any of the other municipalities. We do have some restrictions in our current code that would prohibit us. If there was an emergency, of course, those prohibitions would go away. But in regular practice, because we have a very robust, small and/or certified minority business program, we have to make sure that we are in concert and in tandem with them. So with that, can we use the piggybacks? Yes, but there are some additional steps and restrictions that are there. But we will look to do away with those with the revision of the code, as long as you all accept it.
And I, not to put you on the spot, but I will. You know, you're coming, you came here from outside and coming in. What did you find here? And I saw your, obviously, you shared your list of where you're going in the future besides jumping out of airplanes. But if you could, you know, talk about sort of what you found when you got here and sort of...
Sure. When I came, I saw a very good group of folks that work within our purchasing department, as well as our departments that are very eager to do more collaborative work with us. Was it happening before? Yes, but maybe not as often. So one of the things that we stated was that we want to be, you know, a true collaborative partner, lock arms with all of the departments, not just the big ones, but the small ones too, and really, you know, get into the weeds as to what are some of the challenges that they faced before with vendors? What are some of the issues with the local economy? What's happening, you know, with the CPI, the Consumer Price Index going up, 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 you know? And how does that affect us here in Palm Beach County? So those are some of the things that I saw, and we have a great team that is, I mean, really ready to run with me around the office and around the county to meet with our respective departments, to get what they need, and most importantly, our citizens of Palm Beach County.
And lastly, there's been a lot of talk or issues recently with supply chain issues. How's that impacting our operations? And are we, do we need to be doing anything differently to help mitigate for that?
Sure. I think the greater impact, sir, was coming in during COVID, right? So lessons learned now that we've come out of COVID. One of the things that we talked about is front-loading many of the agreements in which that we have. And the forecasting is something that we must do and continue to do because, yes, we do have the out of emergency contracts, but that's not always the way that you want to go. Reason being is because the dollars, right? It may not be aggressive for us. And of course, we said that we're good stewards with, you know, the public's money, so we do. know, the public's money, so we don't want to pay top dollar should we run into a bind. So, with the supply chain issues, and yes, there are some shortfalls in some areas that we do see, right, with the supply chain currently, lead times haven't stretched back like they did in the times of COVID. But could we get there? We certainly could. But what we're doing, again, is working with the departments very aggressively to identify those key areas and creating somewhat of like a market basket of items, so that we're ready at any time to give them the services that they need.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
It was a very thorough presentation, I appreciate your work on it. When did the, when did our rules and ordinances go into effect for our present department, Purchasing Department? If you know.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I believe the last update was done in 2018 for the purchasing code.
Okay. And we haven't, there doesn't seem to be any issues with folks, I mean, it takes a long time to get things, I know. But other than the supply chain issues, they should be expedited a little bit more now post-COVID than it was, let's say, two years ago when I first came?
Yes. Vice Chair, what we saw was that, truly, we have local vendors, there's a plethora of them, but are they still struggling with some maybe labor issues, supplies, in some maybe niche, you know, market areas? Yes, ma'am. So, with that, again, we work aggressively with the various different departments, and not just only look within our area here as to what we have contracted. As Mayor Weiss suggested, sometimes we do pull to say, "Okay, what does the school board have? What does, you know, the state of Florida have that can be able to facilitate us in this area here?" So, yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is not, it's not a question for you, but, you know, Ms. Baker, just want to thank you for this workshop. We've had the chance to learn about housing, water, and now purchasing. I've been here for six years, I've never had a detailed conversation about purchasing, so I just want to commend you for having this workshop and to learn about purchasing, so it's great to get the information.
I'll second you.
All right. Well, thank you ver, I don't see any other lights, no? Okay. So, with that, I don't see anything. If we are going to be back here tomorrow, is there anything?
No questions?
No, we are. We are. Administrator Baker, you're recognized.
I would like to thank the board for your patience today. I did speak with a couple of you. As we now turn over every eight years, it'll be key that we do these type of things, and I got input from you, which I agree with, that sometimes it's better if we all hear it all at the same time instead of the individuals. So, as we move along, we'll kind of try to fit some more departments in so that they will be able to present to you, as well as the public. We'll learn a little bit more about how we process things. And yes, I know it's slow, trust me, I also want things, and I have to say, "What do you mean it's going to take that long?" But staff does an excellent job, and I'd like to publicly thank all of the staff that worked today to put on these, on the workshop items. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Administrator Baker, and on behalf of the board, I want to, I just want to give our thanks to your staff for this very thorough discussion on, in-depth on a variety of different topics that are so important to our county, to the health, welfare, and well-being of our residents, and unless there's anything for the good of the order, I think we can be adjourned.